We're on the record.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. Welcome Monday, January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two. This meeting of the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education is being livestreamed as well as recorded for storage and viewing on our district website. The public can participate during hearings of individuals and delegates by signing up at the front door using this sheet at the entrance, or signing up for live audio public speaks or written some written statement using the BOE questions form on our website. Adequate written notice of this meeting of the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education has been sent to both townships and village clerks, the Star Record, Star Ledger News Record, tap into Soma dot net and the Bill Screen. Please rise to the President's allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Board member Susan Bergen.
Here.
Board President Thayer Joshua.
Here.
Board member Alyssa Malaspina.
Here.
Student rep Noah Maros.
Here.
Board member Aaron Siders.
Here.
Board member Kawi Telesford.
Here.
Board member Arun Badlamani.
Here.
Board member Kalen Whitletter.
Here.
Board member Courtney Wingfield.
Here.
Board member Johanna Wright.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to make a motion to hold this meeting in a hybrid format due to the governor's emergency. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Bergen. All in favor? All right, that appears to be unanimous, Mr. Burnside. All right, and now I will turn it over to student representative Bill Morris to go through a board recognitions.
All right, so per usual, we're going to start with the student recognitions for the month of January. The following Columbia High School vocal music students were accepted by audition to the North Jersey School Music Association High School Choral Festival, which will rehearse throughout January and perform February fifth. These students are Jessica Hutchinson, grade eleven, Dustin Christie, grade twelve, and Arushi Vadlamani, grade ten. Special thanks to CHS Vocal Music Director, Mr. Nicholas Diaz. The following Columbia High School band students have been selected as members of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two North Jersey Region Honor Bands. Their selection comes after months of diligent practice and successful virtual auditions held on January eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Sophia Franklin, a junior percussionist, was selected as a member of the Region Wind Ensemble, and Seth Piers, a senior bassoonist, received a qualifying score for the Region Symphonic Band, but due to COVID restrictions that reduce the size of the ensemble, he will neither rehearse nor perform with the group. Additionally, their selection to the region ensembles qualifies them all to audition for the New Jersey All-State Band. We would also like to acknowledge the efforts of the additional students who auditioned but did not earn qualifying scores. Molly Hurley, a sophomore trombonist, Elliot Fodiades, a junior trombonist, and Arushi Vadlamani, a sophomore clarinetist. These students represent the very best of the Columbia High School Band program. We are happy to celebrate their accomplishment with the entire SOMSD community. Special thanks to CHS Band Director, Mr. Peter Bauer. And now on to our staff recognitions. The district in Columbia High School is proud that our very own AP Spanish teacher, Ms. Orsia Lopez, was named by the NJEA Women in Education Committee as the two thousand twenty-two Elizabeth A. Allen Women in Education Award recipient for contributions in advocating for and empowering women. Ms. Lopez is the advisor to the Power Club and has been an inspirational mentor to many students over the years. Last year, when there were serious sexual harassment allegations, Ms. Lopez worked with students and administrators as part of the Board of Education Task Force. Ms. Lopez was formally recognized at the two thousand twenty-two NJEA Equity Alliance Conference on Saturday, January fourteenth, at the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino in Atlantic City. And that concludes the board recognitions for January.
Thank you, student rep Morris. Now I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from the December twentieth, two thousand twenty meeting, both executive and regular session. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders. All in favor? All right, that appears to be unanimous, Mr. Burnside. All right, and now we are at, let me read this first, the board president's statement before I turn it over. Okay, the school board meeting is a business meeting in public and not a meeting with the public. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of an audience, of our audience, and that the Board of Education takes action with very little notice, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before matters placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with superintendent. If the superintendent is satisfied, the matter is ready to present it to the board as referred to appropriate board committee. Members of the board committee work with the administration to make sure, and the superintendent to assure members fully understand the matter. After the committee discusses the matter, it is then shared with other board members to consideration, and only then is it placed on the agenda for board discussion and action during a public meeting. All right, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor and his team will be doing a district goal update. Just for formatting, I believe the presentations will go in order of the district goals, and then after that, we will take questions in order of the district goals. So I'll ask my colleagues to write, not just hold their questions to an end, but write them down in advance to help speed up the process once we get to that. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Taylor. And Dr. Taylor, just remember, I have stepped out, but I should be back by then, but if not, you can handle the question piece of this as well. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Before I begin, I want to congratulate, I heard a familiar name in those board recognitions. It's always fantastic to hear the children of our board members, you know, being recognized for their excellence, so congratulations. I have a brief statement before we begin. Hello, SOMSD community. Before we present our district goal update, please allow me to give a few other timely updates on other important matters. When we last met for our board reorganization meeting, there were comments made in public speaks by parents who were very concerned that our four-day district pause after winter break would stretch beyond what was announced, of course, due to the impact of the Omicron variant of COVID nineteen. As we sit here today, I am pleased to share that, thanks to the work of so many, including our lead nurse Porter, our departments of health, our principals, our school nurses, our teachers, and so many others who have successfully met the plan, we have successfully met the plan that was released prior to winter break. Thank you to the many parents and staff members who took advantage of the additional COVID nineteen testing opportunities that we were able to provide during our four-day pause. I also would like to encourage you to review our COVID nineteen dashboard that is available on our website homepage. It gives a weekly view of the positive cases for both students and staff in our schools. Secondly, regarding the topic of COVID nineteen, in our most recent updates, we have included the news that in accordance with the guidance received from our New Jersey Department of Health and our local departments of health, there is now a reduction of the isolation days for those who've tested positive via a laboratory test, as well as a reduction of the quarantine days for those who have been identified as close contacts. The isolation and quarantine day guidance is now five full days. And finally, as of January nineteenth, the New Jersey Department of Health, or the CDC recommendations, have changed the close contact quarantine guidance. This is very important and timely. Beginning in February, individuals age twelve and above who have not received a booster shot will now need to quarantine after being identified as a close contact. I'll repeat that. Individuals age twelve and above, beginning in February, who have not received a booster shot, will now need to quarantine after being identified as a close contact. We will be sending out more detailed communication on this very soon, but we strongly wanted to encourage everyone who is eligible to please get vaccinated, of course, get boosted as well for your health and the health of our community. Those who are not boosted will again in February become impacted by being identified as a close contact along with the associated quarantine. One last caveat, please wait for the further communications to be released before you upload your child's booster information on our district website. Thank you so much. We will now shift over to our presentation. Mr. Barnes, am I able to share?
Yes, you are.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing that I'm doing everything right here.
I can see, I can hear whoever that is. Is that you, Ms. Malaspina?
Sorry.
Don't forget to mute. No worries at all. All right, board members and members of the public, thank you again for joining us and giving us this opportunity. We're going to just give you a brief, but I think pretty detailed review of where we are with our district goals. And of course, our agenda for this presentation is to first review the district goal process, and then, of course, dig deep into where we are with our progress. So you may be aware of this. I often share this when we give district goal presentations, but I think it's important for folks to know that we're not making up this process. We work with our New Jersey School Boards Association, our field rep, and they help us to facilitate goal setting for our district. And that field service rep does a fantastic job of keeping us on pace and on target with that work around goal setting. So here's a little bit about the district goal process. The formation of our district goals began with the Board of Education retreat, and again, that's facilitated by our New Jersey School Board Association's field rep. The board and the superintendent, we review the previous year's outcomes, including our challenges and triumphs. We then come to an agreement on the selected goals, understanding that some goals are so robust, they may take multiple years. The goals are then formally adopted by the Board of Education via a public vote. The superintendent then takes those goals and facilitates action plans with members of our district cabinet known as the school leadership team. Those action plans are then shared with the board and the public. We did that earlier this year, and it helps to lay the roadmap for successfully addressing the goals. We also take feedback because those action plans are living, breathing documents. We then report out on those action plans in a timely manner, like this evening. One important caveat that you will soon see is that these goals often drive the goal setting of other leaders in our districts. For example, an SLT member may have a very similar professional goal to the district goals. So may our principals, or our academic supervisors, or our assistant principals. It makes sense for us all to be working towards the same goals. In the spring, I provide our board with artifacts and evidence that gives them what I hope is a complete picture of our progress towards the goals that were set early in the fall. We have a portal that we can upload this information to that is then available to all of our board members. The board members then review what's submitted into that portal, and then we have a discussion around the overall evaluation of the superintendent for that school year. District goal number one. As you know, we have very substantial construction happening in our school district. We're very fortunate that our community supported. The improvement of our school building is very much needed. The project is a total of about a hundred and sixty million dollars. And so, as you can see from our goal here, there was a focus on us continuing to move our construction projects forward that began last year, and including updates on our secondary school construction projects. And of course, putting forth timelines around code reviews. Code reviews are when we submit our plans to the state, and they turn them around so that we can begin the actual construction project bidding process. For those who may not be aware, we do post bi-weekly plans for all of our active construction projects on our website. We want our district family, we want our community at large, to know where we are with these plans. As you can see from this very quick snapshot, we're showing you all the work that's happening. This is our Clinton and Jefferson combined plans here that was just updated on January the nineteenth. There's also narrative that goes with these pictures, again, on our website webpage that's dedicated towards long-range facilities plans. One important thing for folks to know is that myself, our school business administrator, Mr. Burnside, and our facilities department, as well as our school-based personnel, we have standing meetings with our construction managers to receive regular updates on the progress of our deadlines. Want to allow Mr. Burnside to just chime in about a few specificities?
At our Seth Boyd Elementary School, we continue to work on the electrical pathways and routing inside the existing school for summer renovation work. A lot of that is going to be on the second shift. We're also completing the erecting, we completed the directing the majority of the structural steel, and we begin the exterior concrete masonry unit wall construction. At Tuscan, we're continuing to work on the electrical pathways as well and routing inside the existing school, second shift as well. And we're also beginning to work on the hydronic piping at the existing building renovation on the second shift, and to continue directing the structural steel. At the Jefferson Elementary School, all footings are complete and backfilled ninety-five percent of the areas. The CMU wall at the boiler for the secondary electric service was reconstructed. The contractor began delivering steel on January twentieth, followed by erection. Fire alarm systems training is on one twelve twenty-two. And at the Clinton Elementary School, PSENG had site subcontractor on site to address areas of concern. They continued with the masonry work, and the contractor backfilled all the trenched areas leading from the new transformer location to the new switchgear. And looking forward, the South Orange Middle School, the bid abatement package for asbestos is in February. The abatement may need to take place the first summer, this summer of two thousand twenty-two. The general contractor package will be bid in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. At the Maplewood Middle School, the bid asbestos and general contractor will be bid fall of two thousand twenty-two, and the asbestos abatement would start in two thousand twenty-three. The Columbia High School, Montrose and Marshall Schools, they're in the design phase and getting ready for review this spring, and they will possibly be bid in the fall of two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. And one important piece with us managing all of these construction projects is that we don't have what's known as swing space. In some school districts, they're able to swing to a different building that's already empty and empty out the buildings that are under construction. So because of that, we have to continue to pace our projects very carefully. I've told many folks that one of the most important pieces that you'll see over the next few years is that we have to be very firm with our calendars. Our spring breaks, our winter breaks, our fall breaks are really important for our construction partners. They use that time to do work that cannot be done while students are present. Additionally, we know that we're trying to, of course, expedite our work, but we can't have every building under construction at the same time. We have to have a place where we can have our summer programming, that is very important, and we also have to be able to manage all of this work. So that's why you see some of the pacing in the planning moving forward. A district goal number two, teaching and learning, student achievement. As you can see, our student achievement, teaching and learning goal is very comprehensive and focuses on the first steps in developing a shared definition of culturally responsive sustaining education. It also speaks about us moving forward with a plan of action to implement that definition in the following school year. And it includes, of course, things that we all want, a welcoming and affirming environment for our schools and our students, high expectations and rigorous instruction, as well as an inclusive curriculum and assessment. I will now shift over to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Friedman.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. So as Dr. Taylor mentioned, there's a lot of layers to this teaching and learning goal. We are very excited about the progress we've been making and the direction that we're moving. So to summarize this first slide here, one of the first things that we did, we wanted to be inclusive of building level leaders and district supervisors, and we created subcommittees with three overarching themes. Welcoming and affirming environment, creating high expectations and rigorous instruction for students, and inclusive curriculum and assessment. As I mentioned, the elementary and secondary principals, along with the K to twelve supervisors, make up those standing subcommittees, and myself and our director of curriculum, Ms. Bodnar, meet with them on a monthly basis to go over their progress and to brainstorm ideas on how we can get to that level of implementation. Moving forward, the bigger overarching goal, as Dr. Taylor mentioned, is the creation of a district-wide definition for culturally responsive sustaining education. And what we have done, we've taken multiple approaches to this. We've worked directly with building leadership to talk to the classroom teachers to garner their input, and we've also created a standing subcommittee made up of K to twelve teachers, district supervisors, and building leaders and assistant principals, along with SLT members. This standing subcommittee is going to help lead the creation and feedback of direct lines between the different internal stakeholders to create the working definition of the culturally responsive sustaining education in the district. We actually just met this afternoon and will be meeting every couple of weeks and talking in between those meetings to move towards completion of a district definition. In addition to that, we're working towards the creation of an equity-framed approach to calculating and sharing data. By doing this, we're taking our existing data, our formative and summative data, along with our state testing data, attendance data, demographic data, and we are looking at it in a more meaningful equity-framed way. As you can see here, the overall breakdown, as I mentioned, some of the factors that were included, our race, gender, ELL, special education, suspension, AP and honor, data, and academic performance. This evening, I want to turn it over a minute to our supervisor of high school math and science, Mr. Jamil Miss Buheiden, and he is going to share a couple of slides on what we are calling risk ratio data.
Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me okay, Dr. Taylor? Okay, great. So just a quick overview of how to calculate risk ratio. It's really just four steps. You wanted to tell you want to measure and how you want to compare, and then calculate the totals and compare the groups. And so these next couple of slides, I'll kind of give an example. So on the next slide, I just decided, let's start with students with As or Bs in quarter one business classes. So this is from Columbia High School this past marking period. And I just said, let's decide to compare ninth graders by grade. So let's say, maybe, I'm just wondering, maybe the ninth graders, are they more likely or less likely than the rest of the grades to get an A or B in a business class? This is just an example. So just to review on this slide, what I decided to measure was As and Bs, and what I'm deciding to compare is grade level. And on the next slide, this is the actual report that I pulled from Power School. And I'm going to explain all, you see a lot of numbers here, I'm going to explain them all. This is the next two steps, calculating the totals and comparing the groups. The nice thing is that our data team was able to get Power School to do this for us, because otherwise, this takes quite a bit of time. So I just had, what you saw on the previous slide was a couple of clicks, and then I hit run, and I got this this out. And one thing I'll emphasize before I speak further is that one is our anchor. So basically, how this works is any numbers that are above one mean that you're more likely than your peers, and any numbers that are below one on this far right column are less likely. So I also color-coded them. So it's a red number, that means you're less likely compared to your peers, and if you're green, you're more likely compared to your peers. So, Dr. Taylor, if you can click a little bit forward, you'll start to see some labels come up. So right here, we see these are all the ninth graders in total that had any kind of grade. So there were thirty-nine ninth graders that, there's thirty-nine instances of a ninth grader getting a grade in a business class in the first marking period. And then the next column is how many of them each got As or Bs, because remember, that's what I was trying to measure. And then the next two columns, if you click forward a little bit, you'll just see these calculated out ratios. So, right, and we can stop here. So what we'll see if I'm looking at this, ninth graders, they're about sixty-nine percent of the grades that ninth graders got were As and Bs in the business classes. But the rest of the grade, if you keep looking across that top row, the rest of the grades, eighty-one percent of ten, eleventh, and twelfth graders who got grades in quarter one business classes got As or Bs. So they're slightly less, that's why you see that red number on the right, they're slightly less likely than their peers for quarter one to get As and Bs. So the convenient thing about this report is really, you really only need to look at the far right column. I just included everything, as you can see, kind of how we got the numbers. And I think it makes it pretty readable, and also saves a lot of time by this being automated in Power School. And on the next slide, I just want to close out by just showing you some of the other things we can do. We can look at ethnicity, so we could look at like ethnicity of students and how they perform academically in different courses. We could look at gender, we could look at special education, ELL, course level, like how are students performing in AP classes versus others? And we can combine, we can do combinations of these, like if I'm really interested in females in the math department, in AP classes, I can break that down. Some things, again, this is our first step, and so Dr. Freeman asked me to just kind of come on and share, you know, version one point oh. So this is what this looks like. Other things we're thinking of that could be helpful is including attendance data. I know we mentioned suspension data, state testing scores. Right now, everything is based on just report card grades, stored grades. So next steps, we kind of just get feedback, double-check our data, ask, you know, if people want us to run any other trial reports to see what this makes you think of, or what you'd like to know more about. I'm happy to answer any questions on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Freeman. Do you want to continue here?
Absolutely. So one of the things that is, I just want to emphasize, and Jamil, thank you for all the work in the update here. We're working directly with all of the content area supervisors. Jamil was having conversations with them, and there in turn, talking, starting to talk to their departments about trying to figure out what different areas we want to run risk ratio reports on. So as the months go by, we'll continue to update the Board of Education on the different reports we're running. In addition to analyzing data, one of the things that is going to be a byproduct of what we find with the different data sets and risk ratios and different reports that we're going to be looking at is really starting to look at our planned instruction and our current curriculum, looking at everything through a culturally relevant lens. So Dr. Bean, Dr. Jane Bean, folks, who is our K to twelve ELA supervisor, is working in conjunction with myself and Ms. Bodnar to really focus on looking at everything through a culturally relevant lens. So once the district definition is finalized, once the subgroups are continuing to work and target how we can support the district definition, as we continue to get more data and data sets, we'll be able to more, we'll be able to do more curricular work along the way. At the high school level, this year, we have reignited a partnership. It's probably been about eight or nine years since they last worked with the district with equal opportunity. Uh, it's probably been about eight or nine years since they last worked with the district with equal opportunity schools. Uh, equal opportunity schools is working directly with our high school faculty and administration. Uh, they are looking at collecting data. Um, and right now we are over ninety percent of our staff. And we are just about ninety percent of our students that have completed the initial survey data, which will allow equal opportunity schools to, to start working with us and doing a deep analysis of looking at creating pathways to best, um, get underserved students into AP and honors courses at the high school level. So we'll have more updates over the next few weeks. Uh, we're going to be meeting with the equal opportunity schools a couple of times over the next several weeks to start the, um, data process with them since the data window just closed and we will keep everyone updated on that progress.
Awesome. Um, thank you so much. I know that that's a lot of work that went into that, um, presentation, um, from Jamil. Jamil, thank you, uh, for you and, and Manjit and all the folks behind the scenes who really have built that into Power School, which is, it's going to be such a powerful tool for us to, uh, to shape and, to shape and present and share data that most importantly can help our students. Um, help us to increase student achievement for our families. Um, so just, uh, very briefly here to close this, uh, goal out. Um, we know that restorative practices is a very high priority for our district. And it has been an ongoing journey for a number of years, but just the most recent information on, on this, on this portion of the goal. Um, that we did meet, um, as a leadership team with our, um, restorative practices consultant, who we have an ongoing relationship with. Um, we had a follow-up meeting with our, um, leaders of our schools, uh, who represented by, by ASCA. Um, and the district admin were kept informed of our, of our progress towards engaging in a thoughtful, customized uh, job embedded professional development on this important topic. Understanding that some of our school leaders have been committed to and trained in restorative practices for a number of years and some have joined us recently and haven't had that opportunity. So we don't want to do a one size fits all professional development approach, uh, for restorative practices. And we are of course very hopeful and have shared with our leaders that we believe that they can also contribute to the training of those who may be more novice in this important topic. Um, so we surveyed our principals, um, and our assistant principals and our supervisors to get their feedback on how they viewed themselves and their expertise in the topic of professional development around, um, restorative practices. We also, uh, in that survey, asked them if they were comfortable. How would they feel helping in this training? We know that, um, turnkeying can be a very powerful tool in professional development. And, uh, we now have these surveys finalized and we're sharing them with our restorative practices consultant and planning for professional development that will begin very shortly. Goal number three, um, staff recruitment, retention and development. Pardon me, my screen is a little weird here. All right. So, uh, we understand that we need to care for the folks who care for our kids, right? Um, we have to foster a purposeful adult learning community at all of our schools. We have to build capacity for educators like I just spoke of. Um, we have to have affirmative environments that center on students' lived experiences. I love that. Um, and again, it goes on, I want to insult you by reading to you, but it speaks to how are we, how are we, you know, recruiting staff members in areas that we need them and how are we retaining these talented educators in our district when they're being pulled, uh, everywhere and, and other places? And this is a, a really high need time for educators. And once we have great folks, how are we developing them? And that's what this goal is, is connected to. So professional learning communities, uh, we've taken these steps when it comes to refining our PLCs. I know that CNI, um, has not think that they've been collecting data from our schools, um, around, uh, PLCs. Um, Dr. Friedman or Ann Bodnar, any quick, quick update on that? I know we're running a little bit long. I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Okay. Sorry, Dr. Taylor. Uh, so just a quick PLC update. Um, we have PLCs up and running across the district K through twelve. Uh, one of the things that we have done this year, uh, per the recommendations of Dr. Fergus at the elementary and secondary level. We have implemented, uh, research-based protocols, uh, for running the, um, PLCs, which has provided a consistent framework across all PLCs, uh, in all buildings, both elementary, middle level and high school. And, uh, we have worked with all of the building leadership uh, and have been collecting information on all the PLCs that have been happening across the district uh, in a Google form. And we have, uh, collected all the data of the topics and things that were talked about at each meeting in an Excel spreadsheet form. So we can collect that data and go back and, um, share it with the buildings and the different PLCs throughout the year to track the progress of the work that we've been doing. But we have been letting the teachers, uh, pick topics. And we've been, uh, defining those topics across the buildings and kind of tracking what pathways that we're taking with the different topics. And, uh, it's been very successful to let the teachers have voice and choice in what they're choosing to collaborate and discuss with their peers.
All right. And so one of the, um, one of the big lifts that we were so proud to release recently, um, is part of this goal is how do we retain talented folks? How do we keep our teachers here with us? How do we keep our administrators here with us once they're here, right? And so, um, we recently released, um, the developed aspiring administrative academy. I'm going to allow our HR director, Ms. Robinson, to give a little bit of feedback on this.
Good evening. So the aspiring administrators academy is a really exciting, stimulating environment where we grow our own. The academy, uh, exposes interested, uh, staff that want to move out of their current position into other positions. It exposes them to the aspects of the different areas. Sometimes when you're in the classroom, you don't get to see, but, but from the classroom point of view. And with aspiring administrator academy, we have workshops, the various areas of special ed, um, curriculum and instruction, stakeholder engagement, governance. And so that a person can learn about what these other aspects of education are beyond their classroom. And more importantly, how these other aspects, other aspects of education affect their classroom. It gives them a learning opportunity, gives them a wider vision. It makes them a better candidate when they're applying for a job on a higher level because they can talk to the higher level and not just by, from their own point of view. Um, and it gives them a pathway to leadership. They also earn her, uh, professional development credits, um, that they must have every year. We, and mentoring opportunities, uh, depending on what their need is and what we have available. It is creating a learning dynamic community within our own district. We are very excited about it and we are, people are responding.
And one important thing, thank you for that, Ms. Robinson, is that, um, you know, anyone who is a teacher who wants to engage in administration or further steps of, of, uh, in, increasing their pay, um, or their status on a, on a guide. They could go and, and get a degree from a, from a university, but they can't get this, right? They can't get this type of customized experience where members of our SLT are going to be engaging with folks and helping them to see, uh, what happens in the school district. How's the school district run successfully and how what they're seeing in their classroom is impacted by that? So we're super excited to all participate in this. And regarding, um, our recruitment, uh, Ms. Robinson, you want to tell us about your recent experience?
So our recruitment, we're using our standard operating, doing fairs, working with interns, our community part, our college and university partners. And this is the beginning of the season for recruitment. So our first fair was, uh, with New Jersey School Jobs, which is one of the largest fairs, um, that the state has. And we, we participated in it last week. There were ten adminis- district administrators, a pool of three hundred and eighty-nine candidates. Um, I'm so proud of the team because we ran so collaboratively, like a well-oiled machine. We were able to vigorously interview thirty plus candidates. And this will just be the beginning of the season of, uh, job fairs. And in combination with all the other standard operating procedures that we use to recruit staff.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And thank you to all those administrators who gave of their, of their evenings and their time to participate um, in such a worthwhile effort. Thank you. A district goal number four, um, district integration. So most folks in our community are aware that this is year one of us launching our intentional integration initiative. Um, and of course we are reflecting on year one and learning from year one. Um, and this goal speaks to that. It also speaks to, um, us looking at the social emotional interventions um, and supports to make year two, uh, even better than year one. We know that just changing the demographics of our schools, um, does not reflect, um, what we want this goal to entail. We want this goal to make sure that when our kids, uh, if they get to a place where, um, they are part of this effort, that they are brought in into a very caring, um, and learned uh, community of, of educators who know how, uh, to engage with them regardless of their background, their demographics, et cetera. Um, and also we, we want to, uh, give the board a view of middle school. We talked about this during the initial intentional integration launch that we wanted to also examine our middle schools and see if they are different enough to, um, to require, uh, a, I guess you would call it an algorithm of their own, right? That takes into consideration the population of our middle schools, the historic population of our middle schools and also the feeding patterns that are established. So we'll walk through a few of these steps. Um, the board, of course, has approved engagement, um, with consultants who are focusing in on, um, just those steps that we just spoke about, right? Some of the implicit bias and racist tendencies and anti-racist professional development for our staff members. Um, we know that these goals, many times they bleed into one another because this is all about how we run and manage our school district. So, um, the piece that Dr. Friedman just spoke about, it, it feeds right into some of this work that we're doing in this district integration goal with the subcommittees, et cetera, and the internal stakeholders. Um, we spoke about our professional development and, and how we've entered into a partnership for a comprehensive uh, intervention, uh, approach over the next three years and three one-year, uh, contracts. Um, and it focuses in on social emotional learning. Um, and you can, again, I won't insult you by, by, by reading to you, but you can see, uh, some of the, some of the really important social emotional um, learning goals of our partnership, especially in what we hope to be a post-pandemic, um, way of working and learning together. This includes trauma-informed framework, um, uh, suicide prevention, et cetera. Again, continuing on the same topics that are being provided as professional development that we're investing in as part of our preparation for continuing to expand our intentional integration past year one. As, um, Dr. Friedman mentioned, um, Columbia High School's, uh, staff and leadership team have been having ongoing discussions around the topic of equity and diversity as well. They, they spoken about, he spoke about, um, some of that work. And again, I want to just emphasize that this work is not standalone. It bleeds across, um, all, all of our topics. And so as part of the middle state self-study, we'll be focusing in on equity and diversity. Not just with equal opportunity schools, but across the breadth of Columbia High School. So, um, we talked about the meat and potatoes of the intentional integration initiative. Um, we've held several meetings. Um, these meetings were really focusing on reviewing year one. We're right now about five months, four or five months into year one of the intentional integration initiative. And we have a comprehensive report, um, about, uh, about year one and, and about the outcomes from, from our consultant, a unbiased third party. And we're making that report public beginning this evening. And we've also been working and planning, uh, for year two. Year two, beginning, uh, September of twenty twenty-two, um, including an analysis of the demographics of our middle schools and the socioeconomic status as well of our rising fifth graders, right? Because if you're in fifth grade now, you'll be growing to a middle school, uh, age student next year. And we want to make sure that we're prepared and we can give the board a very clear, uh, review of those students of the populations of those schools. Um, and just to be very clear around transportation, because that was a concern, um, brought to everyone's attention in the previous years as we were doing our planning for intentional integration. And so for this year, one of our kindergartners, um, out of the five hundred and eleven or so kindergartners who are a part of our intentional integration work, um, one hundred and thirty-five of them received transportation as compared to eighty-eight in previous, in the previous year. And again, uh, that's not a, a, a astronomical jump, but it's, it's a jump that we're monitoring as we continue to plan, uh, for next year. We also, as part of these conversations, have been, uh, looking at special education programming, uh, planning for what that looks like next year. What lessons did we learn this year? Um, for those who may not know, uh, part of our intentional integration work is that special education students, students who required, um, who had IEPs and required accommodations, their placements were done according to their IEPs. Not accord- not according to the algorithm, because we want to make sure that we gave priority to serving those students in the ways that their IEPs describe. And of course, we wanted to talk about ways to collect even more information. As you saw from the previous, um, discussion around data, we really believe in collecting as much information as we can so we can make informed decisions. So, um, if you go to our micro site, so if you start from our website and the bottom of our homepage, you'll see on the left-hand corner, intentional integration, along with other badges. If you touch that intentional integration initiative badge, you'll, you'll go to our micro site. And right here on our micro site where the arrow is pointing, um, our year one report is there for anyone who would like to peruse the information regarding, um, our third-party consultant's view of how our third, how our first year, um, of intentional integration went. And, uh, we, again, we use some of this information to, to share with our, um, district, uh, some of the comparisons between pre-intentional integration and now. This is, uh, just a screenshot of the actual first few paragraphs of the report. It talks about, again, some of the variables that had to be considered that were a part of the algorithm, talked about best practices. Um, and it just goes really deep into this important information. And we'll be having, again, more public conversations around where we are and where we're moving to, especially with the focus on, uh, can middle school be a part of this conversation? So we talked about, um, one of the, one of the outcomes of the planning meetings that we've been having about the intentional integration algorithm for year two. Is can we begin to collect information from our parents, um, to help us with the information that we're collecting from the census data? And so, um, as part of that work, we've been forming, um, a way to add this, add this important work to our, um, to our platform for registration for our families. So if you read here on the top, um, this is the actual statement that will now be a part of, uh, of parental registration, right? Our district and board of education are fully committed to ensuring access and equity in our offerings to students that we serve. The questions below will assist in validating current census data in socioeconomic conscious, right? Used to inform our intentional integration redistricting initiative. Your responses will help our district continue in its commitment to maintaining an equitable lens with all aspects of our programming. And we also put here for those who may be new to our district, how to find more information and make it to our micro site. And here are just some of the questions, right? And these questions can also be answered with, I prefer not to answer. That is an option for families who are responding to questions around, um, their annual income, um, their highest level of education attained, the number of adults in their household. All these pieces we take from the census data that's available, but it makes it even more accurate. Uh, and helps us to have more data points when folks self-identify this information along with the census data. The last district goal is accessing that. The last district goal is access and equity. So let's go, we speak about accessing equity all the time. We talk about having an intentional equity lens. And we're specifying for this goal, the work that we do in registration. Registration has been an ongoing topic in our community. There were concerns around implicit bias maybe being in some of the practices. And we took, we worked with the board to develop this goal so that we intentionally review our registration department and our registration practices so that we can make sure that we're not only doing best practices, but that we are intentionally being equitable in the work that we do around registration, specifically around residency. So we want to collect information because we hope that this that this that this process of reviewing the registration department can be used to review other departments in our central office and maybe even in our and even in our schools. So the first step that we took to review our registration processes and office and design and all those things is that I want to inform us of what others are doing. So we created a detailed survey, a digital survey, that I've shared with our fellow superintendents. And I've shared it with them multiple times to to really try to get them to respond, right? We're, superintendents are busy folks, and so we don't always have have time for things that are not mandatory. But I'm bugging my colleagues to to ask them to give me feedback on their department of registration, right? Is their registration, is it centralized or is it school-based? In some places, registration happens at the schools via the clerical folks there. In other places like us, it happens in central office. Is there a dedicated registration staff that only does that? In some places, there is no central registrar. This is a person who does many other things. I also want to know the ratio of their registration staff to the size of their district, the number of buildings, to make sure that we have enough resources in our registration office as well. Or if we have too many, you never know. I want to I want to have a comparison that's unbiased. And another hot topic around registration and and residency is do districts have, you know, great spans of families re-verify that their residence at a particular time? When families join our district, they have to show us proof of residency. And there's a whole legal definition of that. But after they do that, when do we recheck that? Or do we need to recheck that? Or are others rechecking that? I know in some school districts, they have all families re-verify their residency in transitional grades. So they start a kindergarten, and then when you shift to middle school or to secondary elementary school, which some folks have, which is like a third grade, similar to our Marshall Jefferson pairing, they have to re-verify and or when they go to middle school or when they go to high school. And it's an understood process that's very transparent and only for those grade levels. Some districts even have families re-verify and recertify their residency every year, which I think is a monstrous task for, you know, a district our size. But I want to know if our neighbors have these type of processes in place. And so when we get the, I'll continue to, you know, work with our county if I need to, just to try to encourage folks to give us some more feedback on this survey so that we can use this to drive our decisions. One thing that the board did take action on, I believe, in November or so, is the board, the board approved us procuring a platform known as CLEAR. CLEAR is a platform that many different entities use to verify information. And so what we did, we invited the folks who owned the CLEAR platform to our committee meetings so that they could discuss with the board's committee what their product is. And we could discuss while we were recommending it for a pilot. One of the one of the biggest concerns around CLEAR, of course, is privacy, right? We want to make sure that if we have a mechanism to basically do a background check on someone, that we have very, excuse the pun, clear rules of engagement with this tool. So for this brief pilot, we brought in our attorneys. We had a departmental conversation about how to use this tool to ensure that our expectations were clear. Again, the concerns around residency verification checks, where investigators have been sent to homes for verifications. We know that that's been a sore spot for our community, and we want to limit the use of that if at all possible. We also want to use this digital review to make sure that that we use it in a very limited, very limited circumstance. We also know that only a single person in our district is trained to use this, and that when they use it, when they are required to use it, another person will be looking over their shoulder just to make sure that we have assurances that confidentiality is maintained. And again, we are really hopeful that this tool during its pilot will help us to reduce the need for investigative visits during the school year. And of course, if there are future plans for re-verification, it will be made most likely on a grade span, and we would not, I want to be very clear. If we move forward with a methodology to re-verify residency for a grade span, we would not use this tool for that. This tool is used for eliminating the need for investigative visits. It's not for a wide swath. We're not going to use it as a wide swath review of hundreds and hundreds and thousands of kids. So I wanted to just be very clear and transparent with that. So board members, I cannot see everyone, but that concludes this brief update on our district goals. I'm sure that you may have questions. And as our board president said, I think it would be great if we can order our questions based on the number of the district goal so that we could organize ourselves that way. I'm going to stay in the office until we complete our questions. Then I'll shift myself down to the district meeting room along with the rest of SLT. So I'm going to go back to the beginning. And if there are board members who have questions about district goal number one, now is the time. Thank you. I can't hear anyone. I hope that means so. Okay.
I think, does Board Member Malaspina have a question about goal number one?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I can't see everyone, so I need your help.
I didn't know how we were working that.
So I'm sorry, but Malaspina, so if you have a question, if you raise your hand, one of the one of the VPs can recognize you because I can't I can't see everyone here. Thank you.
I understand. So it says in the district goal that the secondary school construction projects should be fully developed with timelines and regulatory approvals, but and submitted to co-review by March 31st. It's already delayed from the original timelines, and it looks like will not be ready until at least fall to twenty, fall 2022. Why is the delay? And what is causing this delay yet again?
So I think that one thing that we spoke about, and I'll give Mr. Burnside the chance to respond after after I'm done, is part of the exchange here is that we can't have every building under construction at the same time. And that was part of part of our conversation with our construction managers around this, our need to be able to have buildings for our summer programming, our need to be able to manage our district. We can't manage, you know, eight and nine and ten projects all happening at the same time. So we're still moving forward with all the work behind behind every school building, but we're just sharing transparently the pacing of it. And it's not that we're behind in it. We're just pacing it in a way that it can be managed because it just has to be managed in a way that doesn't have us using construction in every building at the same time. Mr. Burnside, did I miss anything there?
No, that was pretty good. We also are also experiencing a little bit of a labor shortage in the asbestos remediation market. And we are having a, well, we're trying to be proactive, and we've shuffled some of the abatement around to try to make it work for our bids.
Thank you.
To our VPs, are there any other questions on district goal number one?
I don't see any other hands raised for district goal number one.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a question on district goal number two?
I do.
Courtney, I'm sorry. Board Member Wingfield and then Board Member.
Thanks. First, I just want to say a huge thank you to the team that put together the relative risk and began to embed that into Power School. I think it would be great to hear more about that in the CNI committee meeting. But I do just want to note, the underpinnings of this kind of disproportionality data is really intended to lift up the risk and likelihood of performance, in particular, from subgroups representing historically underserved communities in our district. So while certainly I think it's noteworthy to be able to isolate things around performance of grade levels, I think it's really important that we make sure that we emphasize this data for its original intent, which was to really analyze the performance of students by some of those subgroups that we've called out, I think, in repeated meetings in the past. The other piece I have is around the restorative justice work. There's a lot in here around professional learning, which I think is important. But I think professional learning absent a really clear vision for the district's approach to using restorative justice can sort of feel like it's not necessarily tied to something. And I know that part of the goal really clearly asked for the district to present to the board its approach to how restorative justice will be used across the schools. And I think families would be really interested to know if I'm at Jefferson or I'm at Soms or Columbia, what does restorative justice look like at my particular school? So my question is, when would we expect to see that presentation?
Can you still hear me? Yes. Is my mic still live? Just kind of just have thumbs up, thumbs up. If you can hear me, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I would review the, I wouldn't want to give you a date right now because I want to review the annual agenda because I'm checking to see what other presentations are planned. It may be that this would be a good topic for for one of the committees as well. So I think it's, I think that's great feedback on both of those comments around around the risk analysis and the and just making sure we're keeping clear in our in our mindset what we're doing it for, right? It's a great tool, but it but that is part of our equity work. Totally understand that, and we can also use it to impact us in other ways, but that is the focus of this goal. And and as far as what restore what restorative practices looks like and what what the district's vision of it is for, maybe by grade span or by or school-wide, we'll definitely review that and get some guidance to you on when to expect an update on that, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, can you hear me? Okay. My question piggybacks off of Board Member Wingfield just in regard to how we intend to use data to deliver outcomes for students. So in the example given around risk ratio, we saw that students in grades nine through 10 were at risk of achieving grades A and B, right? Now, what are we doing with that data to create and implement solutions that will improve those numbers so that we're able to provide better results for our students? So I think that's one. It's across all these subsets in this data that we're collecting. How are we actually using the data to help students? And then the second thing is just a point of clarification. Again, I'm new at this, but when you were talking about PLCs and you mentioned that it was at the recommendation of Dr. Fergus to implement research-based protocols, what do you mean by research-based protocols? If you could just describe that in a little bit more detail because I'd like to understand how we're, you know, providing more instruction training for teachers. And that's it.
Thank you. So my only pushback is I'm not sure we're still in district goal number two with the couple of the questions. I think that the that one, that the the PLC is in under, I think, goal number three. And but but as far as the first question around how we use data, I can tell you historically how we've used it recently, right? And I have to say historically, because, you know, I've only been here two and a half years, right? So it's only so historic. But for example, we have a program at the high school that we piloted last year called Cougar Cares. And it was a pilot to review academic performance to offer students who had had previous struggles, smaller class sizes with more targeted attention, to see if that created a change from their trajectory in classes where they were not successful previously. And we shared with the board, first, we shared that design of that pilot summer of 2019, I guess I would, no, summer of 2020. No, summer 2019, I'm sorry, losing my years a little bit. And then 2021 was our pilot, and we shared the results of that during the summer of 21. And the board approved as part of our annual budget to increase the number of classes that are a part of Cougar Cares, again, to serve students who had passed, who were unsuccessful academically in the past, to have smaller classes and more intentional, more intentional assistance. And so that's an example of how data, how those students performed previously was used to determine if they should be given this opportunity for additional support. Another example, I think, I think Jemel is still on here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, Jemel, tell us a little bit about how you use data to utilize the lunch supports. Sure. Thanks.
Yeah. So and also to to an earlier comment, I am scheduled to present to the CNI committee next month. So I'll definitely do a deeper dive on risk ratio and any all the other things that we can do or should do with it. So I'm happy to hear any recommendations as I plan for that, specifically to what Dr. Taylor is mentioning. One of the things that I did last year was, I've done this yearly, but then this year we had the capability to put some more supports behind identifying after we identified the students. I took every student's grades from last year and tallied and tagged any student that had low scores in more than one marking period in math and science. And then I create an at-risk list that I share with every teacher at the high school, every math and science teacher at the high school. So they'll know that are students that struggled last year. They'll know which course they had, who their counselor is, who their previous teacher is. It's all immediately available to them, and then they can target support to them. Specifically in math, we created, we created support, support sessions within the school, within the school day for these students. And I invited, and I was able to invite these students directly and their parents because I knew who they were because I had their data. And I was able to group them. So I would specifically take, for example, on every Wednesday during period six, we have a help session for any student who is in honors algebra two and struggled in their previous math course last year. And so that's one of the ways we're trying to not only just identify where our areas of need are, then put supports in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Bahudine. Any other questions on this district goal? Board Member Malaspina, I think I saw your hand.
My virtual hand. I have a few questions. I thank you for discussing the risk ratio, and I'm in CNI, so I look forward to learning more about it since this was is new to us. We haven't seen this information yet, so I'd love to. Can't wait till next month to learn more about it. I guess I have a few questions. Why, first is, why were no teachers asked to be on any of these committees, these subcommittees that were made?
I don't think it would be appropriate for us to answer that kind of question in public. It might it might spill into a negotiation type of topic. So I would just ask that we perhaps reserve that question for executive session.
Okay, sorry. I didn't think that that would.
No worries. No worries at all.
Something that would go into that, but
Sure.
So I, my other question is, I'm trying to see, let me see.
We can always bounce back. That's fine.
No, it's okay. I'm, I'm just looking through my, my information here. I think that the, everything else is basically answered, or I can't.
Thank you.
I can't ask for it. Thank you.
Worries. Yes.
Board Member Telsford had his hand up also.
Yes. I guess I saw you have, you include scores and as part of your risk ratio. And I think you mentioned, I guess, adding things like attendance. Are there any other, I guess, factors you plan on adding besides test scores? And then I kind of just piggybacking on that, this has helped us identify students that are at risk at the moment. Can we, is there a way that we could use this risk ratio to predict anything possibly? I know we're going to be diving into this in the CNI meeting and I'll be there, but I just want to know if there is any sort of push or move towards that area or that direction.
Yeah, that's a great question. So yeah, so it really is only limited by the data that we have in Power School or that we can't get into Power School. So anything that we want to look at, you know, when I shared this, you know, when I said this is trying this out, I shared the first couple attempts with the other supervisors, the questions were, hey, can we tie in attendance data? Can we tie in state testing scores? So as long as the student's attendance data and state testing scores or suspensions, I know that came up earlier, as long as that's in Power School and tied to that student, there's really no limit into how much different, how many different ways we can look at the data. Any question, but I think a really good one about, okay, so what can we do to use this as a preventative tool? Right? I think that, I think that I would really like to learn from, you know, my colleagues in the board is, is if we can kind of develop a language around or a, you know, a system around of what is a red flag, you know, because if it's, if it's a difference of, you know, a couple of percentage points between one group versus another, is that something we address? Or do we have, you know, I think that that would be helpful for, for us as a group to kind of identify. And then we can really start to say, okay, we're consistently seeing that this group is underperforming this group by 5% like every marking period that we run this report, we need to now, that's definitely, I think, something we can pull from and maybe make some future steps towards. I don't know if we could ever make a predictive model of it, but I think we, if we start to see trends, yes, definitely. I think that's a good direction to go with.
Thank you. If there are no other questions on Goal two?
I do. I'm sorry. I remember.
Okay, sure, sure.
So we've received as a board, some emails related to concerns related to how we look at our data. And offering very specific examples I'm not going to get into. What is being done to sort of address how we look at our data and to correct the mistakes we have made in the past related to that?
So I would only push back, seeing those emails too, is that what I think that, what I think that the tone of those emails from the, from the folks who sent those were thinking that we could be more sophisticated in how we are reviewing data, right? That we could be, that we could maybe be more gosh, scholarly, right? And I think that that's what Mr. and Ms. Bahudin shared, right? Is that we're moving in that direction of being more scholarly, not just in offering this report, but in our practices of using data and having data allowed, having data available for educators to use as a tool. And I, everything, every single decision that a teacher makes every single day may not be driven by risk ratio, but it could be, it could help us to eventually become predictive and trying to make sure that we're putting in ways to help kids and anticipate challenges. So I, I didn't, I didn't view that email as that we did anything wrong. I view that there was a challenge for us to become more sophisticated in how we're using data. And I hope that the folks who are viewing this are seeing that we've taken steps towards that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I can't see everybody to the board VPs. Are we okay to move to three?
I think we can move to three.
All right, Board members, were there any questions around Goal three, staff recruitment, retention and development?
Board Member Malaspina?
I guess I'm the only one. Oh, no. Board member, do you want to go first? Or better, Board Member Telsford? I've been asking all the questions. It's your turn. You could go first. Oh, wait, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I guess I want to know, what are we doing to increase underrepresented teachers? I know that we have, using job fairs, but are we moving in that direction?
Yes. And actually, one thing that we did not note here because of, of conflicts, we wanted everyone to be free to discuss this, is that we also, part of our, part of our part of our settlement with Black Parents Workshop, right, is the work that Ms. Robinson is doing with their representatives to add HBCUs as a resource for us to continue to make our teaching staff and our, and our, our district staff more diverse. And so those meetings have been happening and ongoing. I haven't put those updates in your, in your board packet for obvious, for obvious reasons. But I've verified and that those meetings are happening. And again, you're never done with this work, right? It's, it's, it's always ongoing. We're always able to expand. I, I will say that COVID has made it more difficult. In my previous district, I was able to take trips to colleges and do in-person, even, even way to, you know, HBCUs and other states to do this type of work. But it just hasn't been available with everything being virtual right now. But Ms. Robinson and the team of administrators, they're doing an awesome job of making sure that we're looking with that lens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So my, my question is staying in the area where I'm not conflicted, which is have we surveyed staff to see what they would like to see in, in terms of ideas for retention, motive, you know, recruitment, development, stuff like that? What, what they would like? Instead of us, you know, just giving, doing things?
That's an interesting topic, right? It's, it's almost like, I think it's, it's probably moving towards the work of the climate survey type of thing, right? Like, you know, what could make your district, what, what could make you want to stay in your district and those type of things? We do, for every person who leaves us, we give them the opportunity to do an exit survey directly with the HR director, one-on-one for that opportunity. But I think that some type of, of climate review, I think that that could be a good idea. Thank you for that recommendation.
Okay, so, and that was the Aspiring Academy, something that came out of something that people wanted, or was it just like, we decided to do it?
Well, I can tell you from the, from the feedback so far that people, people definitely are, are interested in it. I think it's just a best practice, right? When you have the ability to do so, we have, the, the board has approved over the last couple of years partnerships that we brought forward, like for example, King University, Drexel and others. And some of those offer a tuition reduction for teaching staff who want to, who want to extend themselves to other opportunities, whether it be administration or CST or a plus 30 opportunity. And so that's one step, providing that reduction of tuition for teachers. But the next step is saying that this job opportunity is more than just a degree, right? That we can offer you more perspective on that. So, you know, as we always say, you know, we can always do better and always have an opportunity to get feedback from folks on how we're doing and how we can make their experience better. And I'm sure that Ms. Robinson has taken note of that.
Thank you.
So.
Board Member Wingfield and then Board Member Whitlitter have their hands up?
I just had a question either for Dr. Taylor or Dr. Friedman to just speak to the plan of how you are going to measure impact of the work coming out of the PLCs. Specifically, I guess, impact on teaching and learning in the classroom.
Thank you for that. And I was actually just getting ready to note that Board VP Whitlitter's question around PLCs and what they mean, I think this is a good time for us to answer that as well. Um, Dr. Freeman, are you still on?
I'm here.
All right, great. So the, why don't we let Board VP Whitlitter just reframe her question around PLCs? Board Member Wingfield's question around PLCs as well.
Thank you. It was just a clarification around implementation of research-based protocols and just understanding what those research-based protocols are. Thank you.
Sure. So to answer that first part, we're using the work of the four and the four and their protocols, the collaborative work protocol and the tuning protocol. And it gives us a consistent structure where a problem of practice is identified at the beginning of the PLC. And they, and there is collaborative input from the group and some solutions are given by the end of the protocol process. So having those, the advantage of having a protocol like that in place is guaranteeing consistency across every PLC that is happening in every building and every level across the board. So it provides us with a solidified question, a framework for a process where questions are asked and it provides us with outputs at the end. So to answer, to piggyback and answer Board Member Wingfield's question, we're, we're collecting that data right now. And we had to introduce the protocol process to all of the staff K to 12. So we started with a book study, the book study protocol from the four and the four to get them used to the process of, of working in that structure. So we had that consistency. So as we continue to collect data from these PLCs, we're going to be sitting down and sharing that with the building principals, with the K to 12 supervisors and looking at best practices and pedagogy around the different content areas. But as far as topics, the topics are extremely wide-ranging. And as we collect that data of the different topics, we will sort them and eventually share them with the CNI Committee to let you know the type of work that we're doing in those PLCs. But I think it's a little early in the process to talk about outcomes. We need to collect and share some of those things with the supervisors and principals.
I think to Board Member Wingfield's question, I think that's a, that's a, that's a good goalpost for us to make sure that we are putting in these conversations is, you know, how is success measured, right? And how, and how is it measured? Is it measured in a, in a spectrum of student achievement? Is it measured in a, you know, pre and post type of methodology with some type of survey? Is it, is it measured in the outcomes of Danielson teacher evaluation pieces? There's a lot, there's a lot there for us to consider. So thank you for that recommendation, Board Member Wingfield.
Board Member Wright?
Yes, you mentioned the exit interviews. What are we doing with them?
So exit interviews, they, it depends on what they say, right? So Ms. Robinson, you know, makes herself available for anyone who's leaving us for any reason. Every single person gets the opportunity for that exit interview. And the information that is used depends upon what the information is, right? I don't, I can't say that every single interview results in XYZ, but it does help us to reflect on our practices, our climate and culture in our schools on our evaluation processes, even the performance of, of some who may who may be mentioned in that feedback. So I think it varies. But I think that the important thing is that for folks to know that every single person who leaves us has the opportunity to leave us with feedback that we definitely do review. Number three. Sorry?
Yes, one more question. Thank you. What is our outreach plan to engage the 30 candidates that we met during the virtual recruitment fair over the next 30 days? And in addition to participating in recruitment fairs such as these, what else are we planning to do proactively to recruit talented teachers early on? That's it.
Yeah, sure. So I'll let Ms. Robinson follow up on the specifics of this fair. But we, as she mentioned, this is kind of standard operating procedure. One of the things that, that we were sure to do when I first arrived and Ms. Robinson arrived is we added breadth to the fairs that we are engaged in. We added a lot of breadth to where we advertise our vacancies. That really is important when it comes to this work. How far can you stretch your, your advertisements when you have a specific need? And not every need is, 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 is as limited, right? Some needs are, are, are very high-level needs. And there are not a lot of folks who are available. And you want to stretch yourself as much as you can to put that out in the world. So I'll let Ms. Robinson speak to the specifics of the question around what do we do with these interested parties?
Good evening again. So with these, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. So with these, we, we act in, in this, with these parties, as we do with all, in all job fairs, we will follow up with the candidates. Now, we interview 30-plus candidates. We may not want all 30 of them, but we will try to build relationships and make offers to those that we can, those that are interested, those that meet our qualifications. And as far as following up with them, if they, if they presented themselves to a standard for us to pursue, we will pursue them. And if they haven't, or if they told us that they're interested in, not interested in coming here, we leave them alone.
Are there any other questions on? Yep, we got you. District Goal number three. Any other questions? All right, we will shift to number four. If there are questions around, follow up for District Goal number four.
Board Member Wingfield?
Thanks. In the version of the goal that the district passed last fall, there were several sub-goals included in this goal, asking for the district to address many of the inconsistencies that Dr. Fergus named in his elementary audit report around the INRS process. And in the sub-goals, we asked the district to really first study and lift up the inconsistencies in that process and then present a plan for how those inconsistencies would be addressed. Everything from inconsistencies around scheduling, you know, how often they meet, and then in terms of obviously the meat of the kind of recommendations made. So I wanted to lift that up because I didn't see anything in the presentation tonight around the INRS process or the MTSS process. And just ask when we could expect to see a follow-up on those.
Thank you for that. Yes, we are aware of those goalposts and, and we've had some transition on our leadership team, multiple transitions in the last few months. And so we're picking that up. And we'll be offering an update on that. I, you know, I, I probably can't say more than that, but I could just say that we are aware and, and that is definitely high on our priority list as we're transitioning with multiple new team members. So we'll have more information on that. Today is January 24th. I expect to have that, to have an update on that within the next couple of weeks.
I would just like it to be noted for the record that I'm recused from this discussion portion, so that.
We can't hear you?
I said I wanted it to be noted for the record that I'm rescued, recused from this portion of the discussion around this goal.
Thank you.
Any other district integration questions?
Board President Joshua has his hand up.
All right, you still have to run the meeting. I'm so bad at child care, so apologies.
Can you speak up, please?
Sorry. Yeah, my camera's off and I'll, I'll turn it on when I'm able to do so. Question was about some of the numbers, and I don't know if this was addressed in the presentation, so I apologize. Were the, the break, I saw there was an increase, I think it was 150-something from 80-something kids that were receiving, from, again, from the kindergarten level that are receiving transportation this year, or sorry, 135? Do we know if that 135? Do we know if that 135 is solely because of the integration plan, or how many of those are students who would have already been, who were assigned to their schools because of sibling preference, or were they assigned to that school for ALL or special services, et cetera? Or is this just this increase purely a result of, is it basically, you know, first in the family kindergarten is in the district who were assigned to a school that required transportation?
Fantastic question. I was actually banging my head about that for the last couple of weeks, because for those who may not be aware, you know, we had a large percentage of students free intentional integration who were already not attending school in their zone. So you kind of go down the, down the rabbit hole of would they have, what school would they have gone to if you didn't, if we did not have intentional integration? And if they had gone to that school, would they have gotten transportation? It's not as easy as it sounds because it also depends on when they registered for school and what the anticipated number of spaces were in that school and pacing out who would have gotten the spaces first. So I think that the increase can definitely be tied to this work, but I can't give you a definitive answer of how much because we were already not 100% school zone, home zone schools.
Thank you.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Given that we've already been through one year of the intentional integration plan, actually the implementation, what are we trying to do to make sure that we incorporate the results that we found into this year's intentional integration algorithm?
Yes, sir. So this is actually what this portion of our, of our presentation was about, right? So we're taking all the feedback that's in that comprehensive report that we placed in the board packet a couple of weeks ago and released to the public today. We're using that information to drive our planning for year two. That also includes this slide I shared with you around self-reporting, right? That we, we've been advised that self-reporting will make our algorithm even more impactful. And also understanding that the transportation piece is one that we're also going to continue to look closely at, that by using proximity as a, as a variable in this work, it would help us to keep our transportation manageable, that we understand that we don't want families, if at all possible, to, to be traveling far beyond the two-mile threshold. We're also utilizing, as you saw from our previous goal, we're looking at the social emotional piece, understanding that as we go through the years of this implementation, the, you know, by design, the demographics of these schools will be changing, and the staff members need to be prepared to interact with, with a new demographic and in a, in a way that meets our expectations. So those are some of the, some of the different variables, but I would invite you, when you have an opportunity to read that report too, because it's probably, you know, got a lot of answers to questions that we're really proud to answer, including the difference between this year one demographic report per school and the previous year's demographic report per schools, that our schools, our kindergarten class in each school very much more now, they represent what our overall school community demographics are, right?
No, I appreciate the, you know, all the different feedback that's going back into the plan. There's one thing I haven't heard, or maybe we have that planned out, is the actual feedback, again, I don't know if it's possible, from the parents themselves. The parents are the biggest stakeholders in this whole equation. And, you know, maybe you could get some, some kind of a survey to all the people who were impacted by the intentional integration last year to see how we can maybe mitigate some of the pain that they had, or maybe they had none, I don't know.
Yes, so part of our, in our action plan, I believe we did put in there an, a, an opportunity for families, families to give feedback in a kind of a town hall setting, different from a board meeting, of course, so that we will have less restrictions and we can have more interaction with the public. Yes, we do have plans for that, for sure. And one important piece before we move from this is that these variables that are being considered in this algorithm were, were gained from the public, right? When we had our town halls two years ago, these were the top concerns that families filled out our survey and told us about. Their number one concern was sibling preference, right? Making sure that they didn't have to go to multiple elementary schools to, to take their kids if, if possible. The second one was, of course, the proximity, right? Not, not wanting kids on buses unnecessarily. There were lots of, lots of, we, we really tried to target each of those top concerns in our plan. And I think that that's why it's been somewhat successful so far. And I definitely agree that gaining, gathering information from those who are year one, pilot year is paramount.
Board Member Wright?
Thank you. I'd like to know how is the preschool program helping close the achievement gap? It should really be added as a strategy because, you know, we receive five to six million dollars each year.
Mr. Wright, I would love to answer that question. You know, early childhood is where my heart is most of all, but I don't think it's on this topic. I don't want to deviate, but, but I can give you that answer via email. I can just tell the entire board via email, an update on our pre-K and early childhood, because it has been outstanding. I just don't want to deviate from this topic because it would give the impression that we're not talking about this important one.
I don't see any more hands on goal number four. Does anyone have questions on goal number five? Board Member Malaspina?
Hi, yes, I'm no longer accused. So I, Dr. Taylor, you said that with the survey that you're doing, you haven't gotten many replies back. So what other methods or steps are you taking to understand the registration process of this surrounding districts? Because it's sounding like that's going to be harder than just the survey.
So this is the first step, right? And so my next step, besides bugging our colleagues, is to work with NJASA. They're the organization that I belong to and the organization that the other superintendents belong to, and ask them if they have any information around this, or if they could help me to push out our survey to a wider catchment area. I think that there's not a record I can find of why our registration office is designed the way it is, right? Was it designed this way for 40 years? And was it, you know, I, I know that since I've been here, we added an assistant registrar to that office, but maybe they need to, maybe it should be school-based. I just want to be able to inform the board as we are shifting into budget mode, if the design fits our needs. Or if we're using everyone, because, you know, the registration office, we, every district knows when it's the busiest time for registration, right? It's the summer, especially the month or three weeks before. And also, of course, when you move towards kindergarten and pre-K registration, which is, you know, early spring. So if those are the heaviest times, why can't we shift more resources there? Or am I looking at it from a perspective, we have enough there. I've been in places that didn't have a central registrar. They only did school-based registration. So I want to learn more about that. And again, I'll continue to beat the bushes with my colleagues and I'll also use other, other ways to push out our survey to a wider catchment area.
Thank you.
Board Member Wright, is that a new hand or an old hand?
Sorry, it's old. I'm trying to put it down.
Don't worry, Board Member Wright, even I have problems with that.
I don't see any more questions on number five. Oh, wait, nope.
She's struggling with the hand.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay. So to our board VPs, it appears that we're done with the presentation. If so, the SOT and I will shift down to the board room and we can, we can begin, we can continue with the agenda. I will be there shortly. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that concludes the superintendent's report. I think we're now moving on to the board president's report. Again, apologies for my camera. I will turn it on as soon as I'm able to. So first, I wanted to-
Can you talk a little louder, please?
Let me get a little closer. Sorry about that. First, I want to do a warm welcome to our new board members. Dr. Salas, Vice Valamani, and Whitlader, board members, our three new board members have jumped in with both feet. And it's been a welcome addition to have you on board. Let me talk a little bit about committees first.
Excuse me, Fay, there's the machines running in this room, so it's sort of hard to hear you over the humming of the-
Machine, alright.
The air machines, yeah.
Let me project.
Thank you.
All right, let me, we're now talking about, I wanted to talk a little bit about our committees for this year. Last year, in 2020, the second half of 2021, as you know, the board experimented with a committee of the whole and had everybody on CNI and then placed three board members on the other three standing committees to balance workloads. Our belief this year is that returning our standing committees to four board members will give all committees intention and time needed to do their work. And then to accommodate the requests for more transparency across committees, this year we are planning to have, three committees have, have approximately two meetings, two special board meetings that will consist of work dedicated to those individual committees. And those three committees are CNI, finance, and policy. And obviously, due to the nature of its work, the personnel committee could not have a special meeting would, would be in public. In addition, we will also, we also believe the structure will allow board members to collaborate across committees and that these special board meetings will allow an opportunity for all board members to participate and offer real-time feedback on items related to our 21, 22 goals, and then when we create them to 22, 23 district goals. We believe this new structure will improve information flow, communication, and our ability to work together more efficiently. Believe the first one of these meetings will be a special board meeting focused on policy committee. It has tenderly been scheduled for Tuesday, February 8th. We will formally announce that through a handwritten notice in the coming weeks as that date gets finalized. January 2022, as declared by New Jersey School Board Association, is School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by local school board members who receive no remuneration for their services. They act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education and strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students. Also, to that end, I would just want to note that in, it was January 12th, Board Member Whitlader and I attended the first SS County School Board Association meeting of 2022. Board members from other districts had a, with us also had a discussion on the various reopening strategies in light of the Omicron surge after the holidays. And we also heard a presentation on creative school construction project funding. Okay, also, I would be remiss if I didn't note that today is the Fourth Annual Observance of the International Day of Education, initiative started by UNICEF. And lastly, since we will not meet before then, I wanted to wish everyone who celebrates a happy Lunar New Year. And may this year of the tiger bring strength, power, and prosperity to all of us as we continue to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. That concludes the president's report, and I'll now turn it over to student representative Noah Morris for his student rep report.
All right, I actually have a presentation for tonight, so I'm just going to wait for Mr. Bonds to pull that up. All right, awesome. Thank you so much, Mr. Bonds. This month, Vanessa and I wanted to gather some quantitative, quantitative data in regards to what we've been hearing from students revolving around midterms. This data is very relevant, and both of us, both of us feel it accurately captures student feeling. Next slide, please, Mr. Bonds. We wanted to start with a baseline question. How would you rate your current stress level? And as you can see from the results, these are a bit concerning. We have nearly 700 of the approximate 1,500 student responses that said that they were struggling every day with stress. And if not that, around 500 are not managing well most days. If there's a bright spot here, it's these 300 students managing well most days, but that's still only 20% of our sample. Additionally, the number of students that replied very low stress level is nearly obsolete. So this is something to consider going forward with the rest of the data distributions. Next slide, please, Mr. Bonds. This next question is also very baseline. Did you know there are midterms scheduled? But as you can see, 32.4 or 485 students of our approximate 1,500 responses didn't even know that there are midterms going on. I think that this number serves as a humble reminder that half of Columbia, both freshmen and sophomores have never taken a midterm in their life and are doing so coming out of a year and a half of virtual learning. Next slide, please, Mr. Bonds. This next question continues to follow the trend of student feeling around midterms. This distribution shows that students feel severely underprepared for upcoming midterms. The number of students that responded who feel very prepared is once again nearly obsolete and only rises minimally after hours of self-study. We all know the severe learning delay caused by COVID, but something that's not talked about is the motivation loss. During virtual learning, students could be on their phone or watching TV during class, causing them to lose key aspects of their learning ability. The loss of critical thinking and self-motivation is represented perfectly in this graph. And I hope that this is something we can continue to examine and measure in the future. Next slide, please, Mr. Bonds. This next slide is a very direct question, but just to clear up any confusion, confusion, the ugly mismatch of colors up there are just the typed individual responses under the other option that was added, just so that Vanessa and I could gauge some individual typed responses to what students were feeling. But as you can see, a majority of students don't even want the midterms canceled, but rather have them and be able to decide to keep the grade if it was beneficial. This solution is one that doesn't tamper with any schedules, still allows teachers to measure student progress through assessment, the very essence of midterms in the first place. It simply takes a large amount of stress away from students, but still incentivizes them to do well in the exam to raise their grade. Next slide, please, Mr. Bonds. Just to elaborate a little bit more on the popular solution in that graph right there, on the top where the midterm is taken. And then if you go to the left here, you have the grade increases their course average. And you go down, great, it's included in their final average. Everybody's happy. And the right side here, the grade would decrease their final course average. And the right side here, the grade would decrease their final course average. And because of that, the grade is excluded from their final average. This is some, this solution is one that some surrounding districts have adopted, including Melbourne. But let me be very clear, I'm here and we're all here to find solutions that benefit our students in our district. So that's why I also have another list of possible solutions. Next slide, please, Mr. Bonds. The first one here is lowering the midterm weight to five percent instead of ten percent. Having one exam covering nearly five months of material, counting for ten percent of your grade is an insane amount of pressure to put on a student. To combat this, the percentage that midterms could count for can be lowered to five percent, something similar to our STEM quarterly exams. The second we have here are optional midterms for our teachers. Um, I know that many of my teachers don't even want to give a midterm and feel that this year isn't the time to be giving them. And this third one right here is having midterms count for any other course grade in quarter two. This reduces student stress by greatly removing that big ten percent pressure of the weight, that's that big ten percent pressure of having that weight on your final grade. Next slide, please, Mr. Bonds. So why are students so stressed? Why are students, like, why do they feel so behind? We are trying to push business as usual during a time that is not business as usual. As you can see from this COVID case data, taken from the SOSD COVID dashboard, over two hundred and fifty-nine students have had to quarantine and miss instruction at Columbia, and that's not even counting those that had to quarantine due to exposure. Along with this, windows being open, the inability to work in groups, and other COVID precautions have not made this a normal year. So why are we going forward with normal midterms? Thank you for presenting this, Mr. Bonds, and now I'm going to jump into some quick updates going around the district as I usually do during my reports. This month, Vanessa and I had our regular meeting with Dr. Taylor. Support services for students falling behind due to COVID quarantining was one of the major things that we discussed. Many students tend to fall behind after quarantining due to COVID. There needs to be a bit more time to make up work. Some cases of COVID can still be severe, leaving a student unable to complete work for days at a time. Both Vanessa and I look forward to working with the board to have better supports in place for these students in the coming weeks. We also discuss ways to decrease student stress as well as support our students with accommodations if virtual learning does take place again. Moving on, the Columbia High School Student Council and Clubs have continued to also be busy. The CHS Student Council is hard at work with Valentine's Day projects and hosting weekly meetings, as well as planning informational forums for the upcoming Black History Month. And in addition to that, the Students for Justice Club has been doing outstanding work to give winter clothes to those in need. They've given away tons of coats over the last two weeks and have made a huge impact on our local community. That's it for January twenty twenty-two student representative report. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Vanessa and me via emails that can be found on the district website. Thank you.
Thanks Noah, that was great, thank you.
Are we gonna have a chance to ask questions of him or respond? To that incredible report?
It's up, Noah, do you want to say questions now or do it via email?
I'm sorry, can you just say it one more time?
Did you want to take questions now or do it via email?
Yeah, I can take questions if any board members have any.
Thank you. Um, Noah, first I have to commend you for your report. It was incredible. Um, it's one of the best reports I have seen. On the board, it was clear and concise and easy to follow. Um, so my, I, I, I very much appreciate hearing from the staff and stu-, I mean, the students of CHS um, about their concerns. I think as an educator myself, I see those concerns happening in schools every day, especially high schools. Um, I guess my, my question is more towards district staff. We have now heard these children, um, and, and they, they're stressed, they need help, they uh, they're not saying we don't want midterms, but they're saying, can they count for less? Um, you know, can they count for only if it helps them? I mean, I really believe we have to listen to our students and, and look at ways to make that happen, because this is not a normal time and these kids have been through so much. And I really would hope that something was taken into account to um, to help these students.
Thank you, Board Member Malaspina.
That sounds like the Director for Administration, so are there any other questions for um, student rep Morris?
I mean, I guess the question also would be for him, is there anything else we're missing? Uh, stu-, you, you know, Board Member Morris, that you have heard about midterms that you didn't?
I'm sorry, I think you might have cut out at the end there, Board Member Malaspina.
I guess my question is, is there anything else that you want us to know that might not have been captured in that presentation that you're hearing from students related to midterms, especially since getting closer to the time period?
I think that honestly captures the, the general student feeling there. And um, just to repeat, and you said it as well, a majority of students don't want these midterms canceled. This isn't just our students being lazy. They've been under an immense amount of stress um, over the last two years, two and a half years. Um, so I, they, they want to have these midterms. It's not students being lazy. You know, they, they, they realize that it's important for their teachers to be able to assess the uh, the content knowledge there, but the amount of pressure that's put on these midterms is really taking a toll on students.
Thank you.
To the board president, can I respond? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so our student representatives did a fantastic job, great work. And during our chance to um, to have our monthly meeting, uh, we shared that this will be going to Principal Sanchez um, to consider um, what's, what is, what is the best solution to this challenge? And I want to just remind everyone who may not remember that um, we had multiple alternative grading options that we put in place uh, for the last couple of years since March twenty twenty. And um, we support, uh, we are offering to support Principal Sanchez as thought partners. Um, as we consider this, I know it's very time, time-heavy right now, so um, I'm sure that our CNI department, Dr. Friedman and Ms. Bodnar will reach out to Principal Sanchez as a follow-up to see um, what the best solution that's available to us will be. And, and we're proud of the alternative grading pieces that we put in place the last few years uh, with this consideration of everyone's mental health. So thank you for bringing it to our attention and for your advocacy.
Great, thank you, Dr. Taylor. Um, excuse me, I now just want to confirm that we are in fact now at the time uh, for hearings and individuals and delegations, also known as public speaks. This is our first public speak. This is an opportunity for you to share your concerns about an item on the agenda, but not a time for dialogue with the board. Board request that you state your name and town of residence for the record. We will set the time to, let me count real quick. We will set the time to three minutes for each speaker, and we ask that you respect that time limit. We must cut you off so it does not appear as if we are giving anyone an advantage to share their views over another individual. Speakers have the few, the full protection of free speech during public speaks. However, this form does not protect you from the subject of your free speech pursuant liable or standard charges. And finally, the board recommends that all members of our community pursue the chain command. We will start first, as we always do with the in-person um, public speaks. And our first public speaks is from Rosio Lopez.
Can you hear me now? Yeah. Okay, so before I speak, I want to ask for a second because I think we have forgotten that Somaya lost a member. Uh, you actually lost an employee, employee on December twenty-fourth, and we have not make a moment of silence. So I have here Pierre, he's uh, from Transportation, and we lost one of our, of our bus drivers, and I think everybody forgot about that. So we're gonna give ourselves our respect. So please, Pierre, can you say her name? And please, I ask for a moment of silence.
Miss Lopez, just for the record, it's on our agenda for this evening, and we have not forgotten. Thank you.
Is it on your agenda?
Yes, it is.
And we don't do it at the beginning of the meeting?
We'll do it when we get to memorials. Thank you.
Well, in my twenty-one years, I never saw it that way, but so then.
We did it this way last month. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine, and then I'm gonna speak. I just wanted to give her the time, you know, and the recognition, that was all. Um, okay, so whenever you. Okay, so my name is Rosio Lopez. I am Spanish AP teacher at Columbia High School. I am the president of Somaya and a proud um, resident from Maplewood. And I'm here today because I'm hearing a lot of things. Uh, it's not that I'm prepared for a speech. I just came because in the recent week, um, June fourteenth, and sorry, January fourteen and January twenty-one, I lost two family members, two, two teachers from Word Language. They're amazing teachers. Uh, they're leaving, they already gave their resignations. Our Italian teacher was the person that actually recreated the whole Italian. She's teaching six classes. She took the kids to Italy uh, on her own time. She was running the club for free for many years. And she went to Livingston for twenty thousand dollars more. So this is a teacher that is making twenty thousand dollars more in another district, and we just lost probably the best Italian teacher we had in years. And you can ask the community about how she, how she was. The other person that we lost, Spanish teacher, uh, a couple of days ago, she's leaving us, going to another town um, for ten thousand dollars more without having to do extra work. They offer her um, if she wants to do any other stipends to even make more money. And she was the advisor of FLESS. So this is not only affecting the high school, this is, this is affecting all the kids in all the elementary schools that are taking Word Language. Word Language teachers are hard to get, good ones. This person was the most promising teacher we had as a Spanish teacher in Columbia High School. The Italian teacher is super profitable. So I just wanted to tell you that because as a word language, one language educator and the president of Somaya, this hurts. Enough already. We have to do something about this. We can't keep losing people every week. We have to do something, please. I ask you to please do something about it. So that was the reason that I wanted to speak, but now that I listened to some of the conversations about the goals, I wanted to answer to Malaspina. No, teachers had no input whatsoever, like, they didn't ask for our input. I told you, we're second-class citizens. Nobody even comes to talk to us. We're nothing to say. Uh, the Academy for Retention, um, thirty teachers is nothing. We used to get ninety and ninety-five here every time we did a fair, and it was just our own fear for South Orange and Maplewood. So that's nothing. If we're talking about that, two teachers in one week, okay? Midterms, um, yes, we don't know. Like, one day there is midterms, the next day we, we don't have midterms. I told the kids, we have midterms until we don't. Um, a supervisor, our principal tells us we're gonna have midterms, and the next day, the supervisor of one of the departments say, no, there is no midterms. You guys are not giving me midterms, so we're getting crazy. And one more thing, PLCs? I think you should, I think the board members wanna hear me, but the PLCs.
Thank you, your time is up.
Yeah, we're doing right now is reading a book about being authentic. How are you going to get data for that?
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, um, board president. Thank you, board members, thank you.
Thank you. Our next in-person public speaks is from Shira Lincoln.
My name is Shira Lincoln. I've been a teacher at Marshall School for twenty-four years, and I am the Vice President of Somaya. I wanted to speak about the manner in which this district has decided to administer state-mandated training to its staff. For the past three years, the school district has spent money to buy programs from the Global Compliance Network, GCN, which bundles all of the topics mandated by the state into a website that faculty and staff can access. All of these trainings add up to almost nine hours. Before the district decided to spend additional money on these training topics, the trainings were arranged by building administrators and done during our contractual meeting times. Now staff is expected to use our own time. When over twenty years of fulfilling these hours during our school day was being changed to the GCN system, Somaya asked our building admin to allocate building meeting times to allow us to do the training. And up until this school year, that has been granted. Now, while still dealing with the pandemic, where staff have been seriously ill, lost loved ones, and are absorbing the secondary trauma from our students' lives, the superintendent has decided, too bad, we are not providing you time. And we are hearing that if these trainings are not completed on our own time, it will be noted on our employees' summit of evaluation. Our previous superintendent gave our secretaries a half-day off just to complete them. Where is the respect from this administration? Instead, we were told we had plenty of downtime during our week of virtual instruction because we were in planning. This is insulting. Do you realize how much and how much time we spend outside of school doing our jobs? Planning and creating slides for our children to make virtual learning a success? This takes time. We were asked to afford Central Office the opportunity to make mistakes related to giving staff notice surrounding professional development. Because of this, Somaya members had to use another two hours of their own time listening to the GCN recordings. We are constantly being asked to give grace to students and families, and now to Central Office staff. But I ask again, where is the grace given to us? In addition to miserable physical conditions and being surrounded by trauma both in and out of the classroom, this administration refuses to afford time during meetings to complete training. This is why Somaya advocates for its membership and is here today to say, when it comes to the administration caring about the well-being of our members, please hear me, talk is cheap.
Thank you, thank you. Um, our next in-person public speaks is from, is there a Vivi in there? I can't see, is anybody moving? If not, I'll move on to the next person. Alright, our next in-person public speaks is from Wilma Steinberg.
Hi, I'd like to concede my time to the next speaker, Alice Solomon, please.
Um, sorry, we don't concede time anymore. Um, due to the board policy, it was changed in August of two thousand nineteen.
Is this, oh, I wouldn't have known, yeah. This is new? This is a new thing?
Yeah, they changed it.
August two thousand eighteen.
At this moment.
Thank you. Um, so if, if there are no. Our next public speaks is from Alice Solomon.
Thank you for hearing me. I'll try to talk fast.
Thank you, we have three minutes.
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of people both here and on the remote field, uh, feed. My name is Alice Solomon. I've been a resident of this amazing, diverse, progressive community for forty-three years, and I've taught in our school district for seventeen of them. So it is with true love for this community that I share with you these pressing concerns. We are all familiar with the ordeal and accusations made about Tamar Herman, which has been wildly spread on social media. Recently, the Essex County Prosecutor's Office announced that they did not find a basis on which to pursue any charges against Ms. Herman. Yet Tamar remains being unjustly vilified. She's received death threats, her career and her good name destroyed, her life now forever changed. I know Tamar both personally and professionally as a colleague. I know this very caring, gentle person so dedicated to the betterment of her community could never have done what she was accused of. This is a difficult and very complicated issue for me to speak about, but we feel compelled to call out the anti-Semitic undertones of this attack against Tamar. especially in light of the recent Texas synagogue attack. Please make no mistake about it, the anti-Semitism has been documented. I understand that the Maplewood Police, the school board, our superintendent, and other community authorities would not have wanted to address the issue at the time in an effort to avoid an explosion of complicated tensions. However, we feel we can no longer be complacent about the anti-Semitism as well as Islamophobia and our community's response to it or lack of. Our school district is proud of its often touted commitment to supporting our ethnic populations and providing restorative practices to students and staff. Yet when it comes to this Jewish woman, the commitment is being ignored. And where are the restorative practices you speak of for this wonderful teacher so viciously wronged and damaged? So we turn to you, SOMA Board of Education, and ask that you do your duty to support your dedicated staff and that you exonerate Tamara Herman and return her to the classroom. In addition, we ask that you institute district-wide anti-Semitism awareness and training. This incident shows the dire need for it to do so. Maybe, as seen on so many lawn signs, maybe hate has no home here, but it sure does on the internet. Again, let me be clear. We need to exonerate Tamara Herman and institute sensitivity program about training that ethnic heritage
Ms. Solomon, thank you very much, your time is up.
Especially anti-Semitism.
Ms. Solomon, please, thank you, your time is up. Our next public speaks is from Marshery Hadrock, Handrock. Apologies if I mispronounced it. Please correct me. Okay, I'll move on. Our next in-person public speaks is from Lauren Rutkin.
Thank you. I actually thought I had two minutes, so you'll get a minute back. Um, my name is Lauren Rutkin. I am president of the Columbia High School Baseball Boosters. I have been a resident for fifteen years, and I have three kids in the school system. When my son arrived at Columbia, there were forty to fifty players fielding two teams. This year's potential roster of players who will try out has grown to more than eighty interested players. That growth is an outcome of many factors, including a strong community of dedicated parents who have made our fields and programs in town a priority. I am here tonight to make the BOE aware of the state of our baseball fields and to advocate for the dire improvements needed just to play this season. A proposal of must-dos in order to make the fields playable now seems to be caught in the system. As of right now, the fields at Underhill are not in playable condition. We are at a high risk of player injuries as a result of our fields, which could lead to possible negligence. We have been advocating for years in regards to longer-term improvements, but tonight we are making you aware of short-term needs that if not made, the district really could be liable if any player gets hurt. That is how bad it is at Underhill. Our district athletic director, Principal Sanchez, baseball lead coach, head of facilities, and a fields consultant walked the fields the first week of December and made a punch list of the needed work after months, if not years, of communication on this subject. The proposal was sent to various departments and decision-makers as early as January fourth. However, we have not yet received a green light, and time is not on our side. We are asking for the proposal to be reviewed, approved, and executed immediately. We are at risk for not being able to hire the professional who provided the estimate due to his full schedule and not get the work done on time for pitchers and catchers reporting on March eighth. As of now, seven of our senior baseball players have been recruited to play in college and a few more who decided to not go that route. We have accomplished a lot in the baseball community on fields in need of much work. Who knows what the potential could have been or will be on playable fields. We are not asking for a field of dreams. That day may come. We are just asking for safe and playable fields. Please let me know how to best make this happen, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, our next in-person public speaks is from René Pierre Louis.
Good evening. Uh, my name is René Pierre Louis, a longtime resident and employee of the South Orange Maplewood. I come here before you today to express my frustration about the work condition that we are working under. Since the beginning of the school year, we have taken help from every higher personnel that we can think of and feel so many complaints, nothing changed. We do not want to wait for a tragedy to happen to bring this to light. We are tired of the hostile, unfair work environment and practices that we are working under. The disrespect, the verbal abuse, the accused discrimination, and the constant harassment. I wanted you guys to know that we love doing our job. We wanted to do our job respectfully, but under this condition, it's very hard to do so. And we are tired of keeping secret, staying silent. Darkness and secrecy are no longer acceptable to us. It's never the right formula for success. We know it's going to be retaliation, so be it. This is always the way when you come out of darkness. We're here today asking you for help that is desperately needed to do our job and hope that he who has ears can hear, did hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now move on to our, um, audio public speaks. And our first audio public speaks is from old friend, Tony Mizaki.
There was one more?
There is one more in person? All right, I don't have to, I don't see that.
Sorry, Dina Malik.
Okay. Thank you, board secretary.
Good evening. My name is Dina Malik. I've been a resident of Maplewood for thirty-five years, and four of my children graduated from Columbia High School. I am appalled by the social media fiasco that has emerged as a result of an incident or non-incident in a second-grade classroom. I've worked personally with Tamara Herman, although it was many years ago. We were both swim teachers and lifeguard instructors under the auspices of the American Red Cross. Tamara is a caring person and a talented teacher. The suggestion that she would treat a student with blatant disrespect has no traction at all. But the disrespect with which she has been treated is believable, dismaying, and very real. In my professional work, I am a responder to workplace disruptions. I've witnessed the damage done when facts, so-called, are created online. Our educators and board members have been exposed to vulgarity and even threats of physical harm. Hate speech, anti-Semitism, Islamophobia, they are real, present dangers here and now. The response to the, this episode, uh, I don't do that much social media, but I do some of it, has highlighted the undercurrent of anti-Jewish sentiment present in our community and unfortunately growing. Tamara Herman was a victim of trial by mob. That there was no credible evidence of legal wrongdoing is affirmed by the fact that the county prosecutor's office has declined to pursue a case against her. This woman's religion and ethnicity, Jewish, has been publicly, negatively, and repeatedly referenced by her accusers. This is appalling, unacceptable, un-American, and I believe it should be publicly acknowledged and condemned as such. The Board of Education now has an opportunity to respond appropriately on behalf of an employee of this district who has been grievously wronged. And I look to this body to act promptly and do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and we will now move on to our audio public speaks, um, and Tony Mizaki. Yes, you can be heard. You got three minutes, man.
All right, good evening. As budget season approaches, uh, I'm here to advocate for the district-wide music programs, which continue to be deeply affected due to the challenges surrounding COVID. Um, just so you're all completely aware, our instrumental and vocal music program is built on a really strict five-through-twelve sequence, whereas all of the musical ensembles you see at the high school are built over time because up to eighty percent of district students start instruction in the fifth grade. So when that number dropped to less than half of students starting in fifth grade last year, never mind the ones who stayed in the program and received Zoom instruction, um, we were thrust into a situation where in two to three years, the district program as we know it, you know, could be destroyed. Um, thankfully, Dr. Taylor's administration and this board approved a solution which included hiring, uh, part-time music teachers at the middle school level to help rebuild the program that had been heavily damaged, hit a restart button, and start students from scratch, actually, in middle school since they missed the opportunity in fifth grade. Um, I haven't seen the data, but I'm aware the program numbers are predictably very high at the middle school level. So I'm asking this evening you consider extending these halftime positions, uh, at least through next year, as the work has been very effective but is needed for the foreseeable future. Uh, we're not out of trouble yet, as you just heard from the student rep. Uh, the increased numbers in the middle schools is evidence there's still great appetite for this instruction, right? It remains a crucial part of our students' lives. It has incredible benefits, social, emotional, academic levels, and transformative as far as their future selves are concerned, especially during these times. Um, if the attrition rate in the program stays low year over year like it should from now on between sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, you're gonna have a huge middle school program, which thankfully can reverse the drastic reduction in numbers at the high school that currently exist from COVID. So, um, while this year's solution, the extra teachers, was great, uh, COVID hasn't allowed a return to normal in arts instruction. So at least another year really is crucial to restore the balance in this ecosystem. I, I'm sure the budget can support the part-time lines, and I ask that you, you please renew these positions. Um, since I have a few more seconds than I thought, I guess I'll add that, you know, I'm sure everybody here has heard the common themes around advocacy of arts in the schools, but, you know, we, we start students here in music instruments in the fifth grade, as I said, and most students begin. And then fifty percent discontinue playing after receiving lessons for only half an hour a week. So we misguided, then deduced that means fifty percent of students aren't musically talented. And we believe it was like handed down through the generations in our family, but science has shown that talent is not inherent and inborn. It's grown. It's nurtured, it's cultivated in school, and everyone has it. So just because you're gonna see bigger numbers in the music program doesn't mean we magically have a wave of students that's become talented all of a sudden. It means that we didn't teach it out of them through, you know, scheduling and a lack of support. So I appreciate you considering this. I hope you're all well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will now move on to our written, written public speaks, and I'll turn it over to Vice President, um, Bergen with Linder.
Thank you. Um, our, our first written public speaks is from Lana Stapleton. Dr. Taylor and board, to follow up on the issue of ventilation, I would like answers to questions in a few areas. First, what is the exact status and timeline of improvements to ventilation as part of the long-term improvement project? Second, the Corsair Rosenthal box has been found to be highly effective air purification tool. It is both inexpensive and easy to access the materials needed for construction. This would be an ideal complement to the Oderox machines in large spaces in our schools. Additionally, students and staff could be involved in the construction of these devices as an educational activity. Would you be willing to use these devices? Third, are the Medif, Medify filters being replaced at the appropriate intervals? How is this being managed? Thank you. That was from Lana Stapleton of Maplewood.
The next public speaks is from Nala Hadzik of South Orange. Everyone is so tired of dealing with the interruptions of COVID to our lives. And while the district has made some efforts to minimize disruptions and keep our kids safe, the most important work is yet to be done. This is the work on improving ventilation. For an airborne virus, we need far more to be done on improving our air quality. My first urgency is to do a simple, affordable, and very effective fix that thousands of districts across the country have already done. That is to use HEPA filters and a fan to make our own air purifiers. These DIY boxes are actually effective at filtering virus out of the air, unlike the expensive Oderox machines the district bought instead. I urge every single person who sits on this board to look at exactly what was done to improve air quality in our old buildings since the start of this pandemic and ask themselves, are we doing everything we can? Thank you.
The next public speaks is from Claire Assernau. In regarding Tamara Herman, Ms. Herman grew up in our community and stayed here to teach as an adult. She is a caring person, deeply committed to her students, exactly the kind of person we need in our schools. She deserves the school board's support now as she is being attacked by vicious antisemites whose death threats forced her out of her home and her job. The accusations leading up to her admin leave were thoroughly investigated and shown to be without basis. Obviously, Ms. Herman should not have touched the child. This is a no-no for any adult in the classroom nowadays. She did it all in innocence, believing that the child couldn't see as her hoodie was over her face. It was initially reported in the news that the child said she had decided to stop wearing her hijab, but was afraid to tell her mother, so she stuck the hijab in her pocket and wore her hoodie over her face. Then the situation exploded due to the intervention of an outsider with no personal knowledge of her connection to the event. At that point, the mother and her advisors reworked the description of the event to make it more inflammatory and newsworthy, in which they could then use to file a lawsuit and, quote, "get lots of money," unquote, mother's recorded words. This is a situation where the teacher, Ms. Herman, should have the school board's backing instead of leaving her undefended in the face of vicious attacks. That is a public speak submitted by Claire Assernau.
The next public speaks is from Marion Cender, from South Orange. My name is Marion Cender. I've lived in South Orange for over thirty years, six of which I spent as a proud member of the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education. I am writing tonight to voice my continued support for Tamara Herman, a Seth Boyden teacher who should never have been removed from her classroom. I stated my views to the board and the administration in the letter I sent to you in October. As I stated, while working towards my master's in teaching degree, I had occasion to volunteer and observe at Seth Boyden, where my youngest son was then a student. During this time, I spent some time in Ms. Herman's classroom. I still remember being impressed by Ms. Herman's ability to convey knowledge in a calm, controlled environment. Now that I've taught myself for years, I can attest to the fact that classroom control is a difficult art. After all these years, Ms. Herman's kindness, creativity, and confidence still resonate as excellent examples of best practices. It is simply impossible to believe the story spread over social media. I would only add that it is doubly unconscionable that so much additional time has passed before you have rectified this wrong and that it has long passed due to the anti-Semitism behind the campaign against Ms. Herman to be addressed. Specifically, I write tonight in support of everything stated by Alice Solomon in her public speaks address. Thank you for your time, Marion Cender.
The next public speaks is from Tracy Sham. My name is Tracy Sham, and we have two children at Tuscan Elementary. I have two questions for the board. One, when will parents know middle school placement for rising sixth graders? Two, and are there alternative plans for the discontinued academic intervention services for grades three to five? Thank you. That was a public speaks from Tracy Sham.
Okay, and the last public speaks is from Shannon Cuddle of, sorry, I'm just confirming, Maplewood, sorry. Thank you. Um, just to note that if our South Orange Maplewood School District student rep can be in person in the boardroom for a meeting as permitted for safety and/or also on camera for the January board meeting as an example, perhaps active adults should be as well. This isn't a critique, but we can expect our students to do one thing not modeled by ourselves. And that was public speaks from Shannon Cuddle.
And that concludes our public speaks. Dr. Taylor, you can respond.
Thank you. Um, for those who don't normally attend these meetings, we do take copious notes um, of the public speaks, and we try to give a response, um, live here as we sit together, uh, if we have it available, if we do. if we have it available. If we don't have it available, then we do the research and try to reach out to those who left their contact information. I will go down my list. Just noting that I cannot comment on collective bargaining or comments around staff members. It's not legally allowed for me to do so, but we most definitely acknowledge the concerns that were brought up by representatives of Somaia. Those who've made comments about personnel and their current circumstances, I'm sorry, but we're not able to comment about that. But I would reference you to the previous statements that we have released to the public around that incident and allegation. Regarding the Columbia High School baseball fields, is the president of Booster Club still here? I think she may have, may have left. I have seen that proposal, and I've asked Mr. Burnside to determine if there is an applicable budget line item that's connected to that proposal to make sure that if we are to move forward, that we're able to do so in a sound financial manner. I hope that that review will be done shortly. Thank you, Board Member, former Board Member Mizaki, for your ongoing advocacy of our arts program. Not only were we proud with, of the additional music teachers, part-time, that we were able to bring on this year, we're also very proud of the summer music program. That was a great success. It had a lot of interest from students and families. I'm sure as the board moves through its public budget process, that will be a strong consideration. Thank you for your advocacy. To Ms. Stapleton, I'm not familiar with the Corsi air purifiers, the do-it-yourself, I believe, is what it was noted as, but we definitely will research it and share it with our Facilities Department for a consideration. We're always looking to improve our ventilation. The comment around using a HEPA filter and just a fan to create a ventilator, to create ventilation, I apologize, I'm not familiar with that process, but again, we'll share this with our Facilities Department. There's also a question of the appropriate intervals for replacing our Medifi purifiers. I believe that means replacing the filters, and that was a project that our Facilities Department undertook over the winter break. The comment around when will families know their middle school selection, it depends upon the process. I can't give you an exact date. We do have some benchmarks upcoming when the board will receive more information about our current demographics in our middle schools and the potential of how that can be impacted through a intentional integration methodology. We are hoping to have that brought to conclusion, whether it is moved forward or not by the springtime or so, but we'll give more information, and it's also in our action plans that were shared with the public. Great to hear from you, former Board Member Cuddle. Thank you for your advocacy. Those are all my responses to the Board Executive Committee.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our committee reports. We will go alphabetically by committees. We will start with Board Member Sidors for CNI, and then Board Member Valamani for Finance, then Board Member Wingfield for Personnel, and then lastly, Board Member Bergen for Policy. So over to you, Board Member Sidors.
Good evening. The CNI committee met on Tuesday, January 18th at 6:30 PM. The board members who were able to attend were myself, Malaspina, and Telsford. Board Member Wingfield, Dudix, inform us that she would not be able to attend. The first item is our special services update by Ms. Bedine. The district is continuing to work on vacant positions. Three occupational therapists will be starting in February. One board-certified behavioral analyst, BCBA, will be starting on 1/26, part-time and transitioning to full-time weeks later. We, the district has hired several evidence-based reading specialists, and so that position is fully staffed. All positions will be providing compensatory services to students. The district is also working on teacher vacancies and attending job fairs. Professional development and special services, January 11th was a Tourette Syndrome PD. On February 1st, it will be co-teaching and inclusion workshop. Let's see. Principal Sanchez attended our meeting to provide an update on the CHS Program of Studies. He shared what the program studies would look like. It will be available to students starting next month. He's also meeting, along with the CNI SLT with five universities, about providing dual enrollment programs. Dr. Robus attended our meeting to provide a presentation on the new state-mandated three-year English Language Learner Plan. This plan is, needs to be completed by the district every three years. The goal of the plan is to increase the number of ELLs to achieve English Language proficiency. The plan was supposed to be introduced in 2020, but due to the pandemic, the time limit was extended to this year. The plan is due on 2/28, and Dr. Taylor has distributed the document to the board members because it needs to be approved by board members, which is new this year. Previously, board members did not have to approve the plan. Dr. Bean Foltz provided an update on our Teaching and Learning District Goal for English Language Arts. We talked about the Cultural Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, which is a learner-centered education based on student identity and values of students' cultural, racial, ethnic identity. Dr. Bean Foltz provided an example of the Middle School Reading Challenge, which will start in the spring of this year. The book to be read will be stamped by Jason Reynolds and Ibram Kendi. The students will read the kid version of the book, and the teachers will be reading the adult version of the book. The teachers will conduct a self-study approach via their identity bubble conversations around choices made in personal life. What are you watching, reading, listening to as pre-work for the four-to-five-week unit that they'll be discussing with their students? Ms. Bean gave us an overview of the Tang Math Pilot. This is a K-5 pilot of math professional development that's taking place at Seth Boyden and Tuscan. It's also available to any other grades two or grade three teachers in other schools. It's a full year of lesson plans developed on, based on the New Jersey standards. Mr. Tang provides prep two weeks prior to each of the learning modules that the teachers will be teaching to their students. The district is also looking at Math in Focus, which has been in use since 2012, and looking to see if we will continue to use that for our math curriculum. Whatever the decision made, it will be targeting a fall 2023 implementation. All right. So what we have as approvals for this month is a new course on cybersecurity, which will be taught at the honors level. We have a CHS Model UN field trip to Philadelphia and the state mandated ELL program. The policy's up for first read. We have 2421 Career and Vocational Education, which is a new policy. Up for second read is 2415.20, Every Student Succeeds Act Complaints, and 5116, Education of Homeless Students. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for Board Member Sidors? All right, over to Board Member Valamani for Finance.
Thank you, Board President Joshua. We had our FFT meeting, the first one for this year, on January 19th, and it was attended by, by myself, by Board Member Wit Leder, by Board President Joshua, and Board Member Wright. And from the administrative, from the administration, we had Dr. Taylor, Eric Burnside, the Business Administrator, Andrea Delguerico, Assistant Business Administrator, Keith Ponce, the Technology Director, Thomas Giglio, Facilities Director, and Mike Patonite. Forgive me if I'm pronouncing incorrectly, but he goes the attorney out there. So the, the main, the big issue that we talked about was number one, about the budget. And the budget was, we discussed the calendar and the tax levy increase of about 2%. We spoke about the negotiations, the fiscal impact on it, on the budget. And coming to facilities, we spoke about the boiler for the central office, where both the boilers are pretty much end-of-life, and the, the, the repairs are going to be a little more difficult because there needs to be asbestos remediation. We also spoke about the baseball bid, just like, you know, kind of answering the public speaks that the, you know, the parent brought up. And we're looking at, you know, discussing the possibility of having upgrades made to North and the South baseball fields. Funding is being researched. Construction update, Seth Boyden Gym Ceiling, if you've been following that, there was a new crack in the truss, and a structural engineer has recommended, you know, a tower to stabilize that, and the district is in the process of having this installed. Seth Boyden asbestos removal will be, the remediation will be starting over the spring break. Also for health and safety of district buildings, an update was given about the status of each building and where the moisture might be. And the Board Member Wright brought up an individual case of moisture and discoloration of tiles in one Marshall's classroom. The administration provided documentation for a subsequent, subsequent air quality testing performed in the same classroom, which did not indicate any reason for concern. And in new businesses, we talked about the YMCA contract, the Bergen County Co-op, the Hunter and ESC, and also the possibility of a security grant available to the district. And all of these minutes are going to be posted on the, the district website. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Board Member Valamani? Or Member Wright?
Yes, I'd ask for the minutes to be amended to discuss, to put on what we discussed about the issues at Marshall School regarding mold, and they were not. And I was wondering also if we had been in touch with the administration and the teachers involved to see if they have been satisfied with the response of the district.
I can answer that. Yeah. So, we, yes, we spoke about the, the moisture problem in Marshall School, and the district sent the evidence of the air quality test that was done subsequent to the, you know, the notice of the leak, and there was found to be no causes for concern. So the minutes actually reflect that. We were, I made sure that, that we went back and corrected the, put in the appropriate, you know, concern that you brought up, and also the evidence from the administration about how it was fixed.
Well, we know that an air quality test is not checked. We would know that, first of all, an air quality check, there's mold in the air every place. We know about that. But the air-
Board Member Wright, let me, Board Member, I'm sorry.
I'm talking.
I understand that, but Board Member Malaspina had her hand up, so I need to go to her. We can't, we can't monopolize the conversation.
I will. Board Member Wright, too.
Thank you. The, the testing for mold is not done by air quality. You have to take a swipe and, and, and test it and see what type may be going on with all types of moisture issues. I mean, if you suspected that you had mold in your home, what would you do?
Board Member Wright, thank you for that. Um, go ahead. I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
No, 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 that's all right.
And then if, I don't know if the district wants to add on as well.
See, I'm not, I'm not the expert. I'm not the expert on how mold testing is to be done, and not, I must be, most, most of us on the board are not. But we gave this, we gave a problem to the administration, and they came back with an appropriate response. If you are unhappy with the response, we can always say that, hey, we need more investigation done. But saying that, that is not a good enough test or a solution. I mean, that doesn't make sense. So, so yes, so I mean, this is what we've done. So if you're happy with that, that's great. Let's move along. If you're unhappy with that, please raise it, and we, you know, we look at it.
Thank you, Board Member.
I don't do the same in my house, I mean, since you asked me. I mean, if I did the air quality test, so.
Board Member Malaspina.
Have, not all the board has gotten the copy of the reports that you are stating, so I would like it, if it could be shared with the full board instead of just, I don't know who. And also, I would like the report, what company, I think I asked Dr. Taylor this, but are, we're using a specific company to do this type of testing, and what is, what type of company are we using to do this testing to make sure that it is correct and that our students and staff are safe?
So, so yes, we'll make sure the report is sent to the entire board. I thought it would have been, but maybe an oversight. The, you know, we use, you know, I mean, whatever company that-
Let's let Mr. Burnside answer that.
Thank you. Yeah, the name of the company is AHRA, and we use them for all of our remediation, including asbestos. They're very popular in the state. Most school districts use them.
We have a contract with them?
Yes, we do, and they're also doing all of our bond work as well. Whenever we have a new HVAC system put in, they're in charge of it.
Great. Thank you so much for the information.
Board Member Wright?
Yes. Did we get clearance from the Health Department that was acceptable to the situation to, to go from August until January without proper testing in that building? As children are sitting there, as we're fighting COVID and, and mold issues and moisture issues all across the district. What have we done? Are we allowing our kids to sit and our staff to sit in a building that isn't healthy, that isn't safe?
Board, Dr. Taylor, Mr. Burnside, you can respond.
Yeah, I mean, I would just note that, you know, it's very obvious through our, through our long-range facilities plan that our district and our community cares deeply about the conditions of our building and providing the appropriate, safe conditions for our students and teachers. When problems are brought to our attention, we follow best practices. We also work with experts in the field, as Mr. Burnside has noted. We also have a very close relationship with our Departments of Health, as we've demonstrated through our COVID responses. If there was a need to have them involved, we most certainly would have. I think they have shared through their public presentations that they have definitely engaged us both on COVID issues and, and issues that were not pertaining to COVID. So I will leave it at that. I think that the families whose students were a part of the concern that Ms. Wright is bringing up have been informed and reached out to multiple times, and I've shared those communications with the board.
Thank you. Board Member Bergen?
Thank you. I just, I believe Board Member Wright referenced the district dealing with mold issues, and I think that it's important that we say publicly that there has been no evidence of mold and that we've tested for mold and have not found any at this time.
Yeah, I mean, so I think that the important thing, as you noted, is that number one, Board Member Wright is correct that mold is everywhere, right? Our new Facilities Director informed us, it's all in our environment, right? It's, it's on our shoes. It's on our, in our houses. And there's different kinds- And there's different kinds of mold depending upon the, the trees and the rest of the environment. So doing an indoor air quality test from our experts provides information around if our, if the air is safe for us to utilize, if the air in the rooms that we're speaking of are safe for us to utilize. Making a statement that there's mold in the district is like saying there's mold in the world. There's mold everywhere. But we have to rely on experts who have the devices to utilize them to determine if our spaces are safe.
Thank you. Um, Board Member Mousefina? I don't know if that's old hand or not.
Um, it is old hand, but it's, but I do have a question. So, um, we also know that there are issues with moisture in other buildings. Um, we've gotten the report. Um, I thought we were going to have by now a more detailed outline as to what we were doing about that. Are we planning to test air, all of those areas? Um, what exactly is the, um, going forward, is the plan on a- of action related to that long list that we have?
So, um, we recently, I believe it was, it may have been this Friday, placed in your Friday packet, um, a detailed response on this topic from our new Facilities Director. Um, the original request from the board was to provide a detailed listing of areas of concern from all of our schools, uh, through a task force approach where our school-based leaders worked with their custodian and worked with, uh, a representative from Somaya to create a list of agreed upon concerning areas of moisture in our buildings. We did provide the board with that list, and we also provided the board with our next steps, which will, um, and in that, I believe we detailed, we would prioritize any area uh, in which the word mold or mold-like or looks like mold was, um, mentioned in that listing, and it wasn't mentioned very often. And we also, um, as we, as we wrote in that memo, are utilizing a roofing expert because it's no point in identifying a problem if we're not able to address it. And so we're moving forward with that. Did I miss anything, Mr. Burnside?
No, that pretty much covers it. Um, we are working on bringing in an expert for the next F F T meeting to address any more questions or concerns.
Thank you, Board Member Wright.
Yes, that's wonderful. Um, it's wonderful that we'll bring in an expert to, uh, talk to us in, uh, F F T, but I would like to see an expert brought in to test the mold that is in the classroom at Marshall School that has been complained about since August from the teacher. And we all have a duty of care and responsibility to make sure that things are absolutely safe uh, for our children and for our staff. Um, and I'm certainly deeply concerned, and I won't stop talking about it until something is done that is effective and correct. An air quality test does not do it.
Thank you, Board Member Wright. And once again, I have to publicly note that there has been no evidence of a mold situation at any of our buildings that is harmful. Um, as Dr. Taylor said, there is mold everywhere. Um, there's mold in the streets, there's mold in shoes, et cetera, et cetera. What we did get from the report is that mold in those classrooms unquestioned was, if I'm not mistaken, it was seventy percent less than what you would get outside. So again, for the record, there is no evidence of a harmful mold situation in our school building. And with that, we'll move on to our personnel report with Board Member Winfield.
The Personnel Committee met last week on Thursday, January twentieth for approximately ninety minutes. Board members Siders, Wright, and Whitletter were present, along with Dr. Taylor and Ms. Robinson from the district. We reviewed and discussed the personnel resolutions to be voted on this evening. We spent a good deal of time discussing the vacancy and hiring process for the Assistant Superintendent of Access and Equity. The district has received numerous applications that have been vetted with a select group identified to be elevated to the next round. The next two rounds will involve Q and A from a panel of relevant district educators and stakeholders, followed by the executive staff. As committee chair, I will be invited to observe. The top three or four candidates are evaluated, uh, excuse me, are evaluated and elevated to the final round. Dr. Taylor shared that he expects to share his recommended candidate with the board by our February general meeting pending any sort of outstanding circumstances. We discussed some of the ideal qualifications for this candidate, and we look forward to receiving Dr. Taylor's recommendation soon. Up for action tonight is four two four four E, which covers the commencement of our instructional coaches. We reviewed policy four two one nine, commercial driver's license controlled substance and alcohol use testing. Edits were made to this policy to align working requirements of bus drivers with that of federal standards for employees holding C D L license. Once these changes have been made, we will send the policy back to the committee, the Policy Committee for review, and then to the larger board for another first read next month. We discussed the tutoring interest survey and the need to make sure that our students receive support, especially during stressful midterm season. We discussed the monitoring of staff evaluations, and finally, we spent time discussing the board's role in reviewing resumes throughout the hiring process. Dr. Taylor explained the N J S B A parameters on the board's involvement in the hiring process, including the receiving of resumes. He's committed to updating the standard operating procedures on this topic and sharing them with the entire board in approximately one week.
Thank you. Any questions for Board Member Winfield? All right, over to Board Member Bergen for policy.
Thank you. Um, the Policy Committee met on January twelfth for about two hours. Um, we welcome Board Members Telesford and Vadlamani to the committee. We had an introductory discussion about the policy process and discussed feedback on the policies we are voting on tonight. We also discussed drafting a mission statement with goals for the committee this year. One goal is to develop, develop a process for the review and revision of policies that lays out the roles and responsibilities of all the board committees in keeping the policies up to date. Tonight, we are voting on five policies. Twenty-four fifteen point two O, Every Student Succeeds Act complaints. This policy addresses how to handle allegations of violations of the Every Student Succeeds Act. Five one one six, Education of Homeless Students. This policy is being updated to add an annual reporting requirement to the Department of Community Affairs. Since last month, we added a paragraph regarding support, uh, the district has in place for homeless students. We are also voting on three policies that were required as part of the Perkins Audit last year and have since been developed by Strauss Esme. Six one one five point oh one, Federal Awards Funds Internal Controls Allowability of Costs. Six one one five oh two on mandatory disclosures. Six one one five oh three on conflicts of interest. And we have eight policies for first read. The first is twenty-four twenty-one, Career and Vocational Education. This is a Strauss Esme policy addressing career and vocational education that the district has not adopted before. It had a first read at the end of last year and is back. And it will be revised by C and I to address board feedback from the earlier first read before we vote on it. We have several personnel policies that had minor revisions from Strauss Esme. Thirty-one forty-two, Nonrenewal of Non Tenure Teaching Staff Member. Thirty-two twenty-one, Evaluation of Teachers. Thirty-two twenty-two, Evaluation of Teaching Staff Members Excluding Teachers and Administrators. Thirty-two twenty-three, Evaluation of Administrators Excluding Principals, Vice Principals, and Assistant Principals. Thirty-two twenty-four, Evaluation of Principals, Vice Princip- Principals and Assistant Principals. And forty-one forty-six, Nonrenewal of Non Tenured Support Staff Member. We, um, added a provision, um, after, before the first first read that we had for these, um, about the superintendent establishing a process to update the board via the Personnel Committee regarding the progress of eval- of evaluations. They had a first read last month and are presented for first read again while the Personnel Committee addresses additional feedback received. Policy forty-two nineteen, Commercial Driver's License Controlled Substance and Alcohol Abuse. This policy had a first read la- at the end of last year and is back after Personnel, um, addressed some outstanding issues. We are holding twenty-four eighty, Alternative Education Programs, and twenty-four fifteen point oh four, Title One Districtwide parental involvement, which both recently had first reads to address board feedback. At our meeting, we also discussed ninety-one thirty, Public Complaints and Grievances, which we hope to have ready for first read in February. It will address how parents and students can submit, um, either general complaints or complaints about books and resource materials. Thank you.
Any questions for Board Member Bergen? All right, that concludes the committee reports. We'll now move on to the action portion of the meeting. I'd like to make a motion based on the superintendent's recommendations to move, uh, items four two four four through four, resolutions four two four four to four two five four for discussion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders. All in favor? All right, that appears to be unanimous to Burnside. We are now in discussion for resolutions four two four four through four two.
Mr. President, just to, um, follow up on your previous comment, I'd like to request a moment of silence for those, um, employees, both current and past, who are noted to have unfortunately passed on, um, in four two four four A. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board Member Mousefina? You're muted.
Yep. Um, I, it was hard to hear you, Board Member Joshua. Um, is it, is four two five three in this?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, um, I was wondering what score we gave ourselves because, um, based on my knowledge of how this works, the state does not change the scores that we give ourselves. They just sort of look at it and approve it. They're, we self-evaluate ourselves um, on this H I B, by this H I B action. So I'm wondering sort of what score did we give ourselves? I know we're going to get more information later. So, um, I'm just trying to understand.
Thank you for that question. Um, I don't have that information at my fingertips. I, I agree with you that what is submitted is the score. Um, the, the submissions come from our school-based folks. We open up the portal and alert them that the, um, scoring is available, and we follow up with them to make sure that we meet the deadline. And we, um, again, go through the process of letting the board, uh, recognize that this submission is moving forward. But it's nothing that we adjust at the central office level as well. It is a school-based picture of, um, compliance with H I B. Um, if you, you may recall, a couple of years ago, we, uh, spoke about adding a lot more training because one of the um, outcomes of this was a perception from the school-based folks that they, that they didn't have enough training. Sorry, got a little frog in my throat there.
While you're hydrating, Dr. Taylor, I'll just add that I think, um, the concern, not maybe not concern, I think the question the board is going to have is, you know, considering that the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year consisted of a lot of virtual learning, um, you know, what the twenty-one, twenty-two report will look like, so.
Thank you, and duly noted. I, I think that, you know, when you look at nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, it's going to see, it's going to be three very different, um, results because we'll be in a really different modality when it comes to our social emotional health, both students and staff and families, right? So we expect that. But one thing that we're looking for in this reflection is our investment in professional development on this important topic. We've really, you know, took a deep dive into this as the board has even received professional development recently on this important topic.
Thank you. Any other questions on four two, resolutions four two four four through four two five four? Okay, seeing none, uh, closed discussion. Um, Board Secretary Burnside, please call the roll on resolutions four two four four through four two five four.
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Board President Joshua?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board Member Siders?
Yes.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Winfield?
Yes.
Board Member Whitletter?
Yes.
Board Member Wright?
Yes.
All motions pass.
Thank you. Um, just to clarify, Ms. Butler, I can bring the hand carry now?
Sorry, I keep forgetting it's not on. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to read the following resolution. It's to the record. This is Resolution four two five five. Uh, subject is Appeal of Courtesy Transportation Through Student ID One One Five One Zero Seven Four Nine Three Two. Uh, whereas the parent guardians of student ID One One Five One Zero Seven Four Nine Three Two submitted a request to the superintendent requesting an appeal for transportation in exception to the two mile rule for elementary students and/or transferring school student to another school. And whereas the parent guardian's request was denied by the superintendent, whereas the parent guardians requested reconsideration by the superintendent, which was denied. And whereas the parent guardians notified the district of their intent to retain legal counsel for an appeal before the board. And whereas the parent guardians of student ID One One Five One Zero Seven Four Nine Three Two appeared before the board with their legal counsel to appeal, appeal the decision. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education heard the appeal of the parent guardians and their legal counsel and has made the following final determination in this matter that courtesy transportation shall not be provided for student ID One One Five One Zero Seven Four Nine Three Two effective for as long as the student remains domiciled in the school district at the current residence and the student attends their current school. Uh, I'm making a motion to read that to the record. I'm sorry, can I have a second? It's right backwards.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders? I think, sure, let's go with that. All right, um, so any discussion on that? All right, seeing none, closed discussion. Mr. Burnside, can you please call the roll?
Board Member Wright?
No.
Board Member Whitletter?
No.
Board Member Winfield?
Yes.
Board Member Vadlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Telesford?
Yes.
Board Member Siders?
Yes.
Board Member Malaspina?
Yes.
Board President Joshua?
Yes.
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, and that concludes the action portion of the meeting. Uh, so we are now at the time for our second public speaks, so let me read this again. Uh, we're now at the time for here's individuals or delegates, those public speaks. This is an opportunity for you to share your concerns about item on the agenda, but now it's time for dialogue with the board. Or request you state your name and town of your residence for the record. We will set the time to, to speaker. Uh, and we ask that you respect that time limit. We must cut you off so it does not appear as if we're giving anyone an advantage to share their views over another individual. Speakers have the full protection of free speech during public speaks. However, this form does not protect you from the subject of your free speech pursuant liable for slander charges. And finally, the board recommends that all members of our community pursue a chain of command. Uh, Mr. Burnside, are there any in-person public speeches?
Nobody's present, no.
All right, uh, and let me just double check the, I don't see any written ones. So that concludes our second public speaks. Uh, we are now, uh, moving on to new business. Uh, does anybody have any new business this evening? Board Member Mousefina?
Um, I have concerns about the lateness of the hour and the desire of the board to move back into executive session after this. Um, I think that due to it being almost eleven o'clock and us not, and the, what we have ahead of us, um, that.
It will be very abbreviated. Sorry to cut you off. It will be very abbreviated. Sorry to cut you off, but I know where you're going, and the executive session will be very abbreviated. And some of the things that we had discussed, we're going to find other times to discuss.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then I'm happier with what we're.
Yes, I am, I am, I am well aware of the hour, and I, you know, the agenda that we had is not going to be the agenda that we have because of the hour. I'm well aware of that. For those of us who have to leave the house to go to work tomorrow.
Yes.
So I do noted. Any other new business this evening?
That's my question.
Okay, seeing that, I'll close new business and like to make the following motion. The Board of Education will meet in closed session Thursday, February 24th at, note that, Thursday, February 24th at 6:30 PM in superintendent's office at 525 Academy Street, as well as using the online video conference platform to discuss personnel legal negotiations and other topics to be decided at a later date. After that, the board will move into public session at 7:30 PM Thursday, February 24th, 2022, at 525 Academy Street in the district meeting room. Action will be taken. Please note that anyone planning to attend a public session which does need to wear a mask. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Wright, I believe.
Can you tell me how we, how we put the link that we'll use to go back into closed session? You know, I'm sweating.
I will email it to every, I'm going to email it to everybody.
Okay, okay.
Okay? All right, and so with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 10:53 PM. Oh, sorry, wait, wait, wait. I now need to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel legal and negotiations, well, not negotiations, personnel.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders. All in favor? Okay, this meeting is adjourned at 10:53 PM, Monday, January 24th. See you all in executive session. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Thayer? Thayer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You should make a motion that we're not coming back out from executive session. Make it clear so that the public knows.
All right, we are not, I'd like to make a motion that we are not coming back to executive session. This meeting is adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel legal matters.
Second.
And I have a second. Thank you. All in favor? It does appear to be unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Burnside, and thank you, Ms. Butler.